Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the August -- City Council for August 10th, 2023. The time is now 6:01, and I call the meeting to order, and I will take roll call. Dave Abdallah is absent. Hassan Ahmad?
Here.
Mo Baydun?
Here.
Nancy Breyer?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
Ray Muscat is absent. And Tom Wenzel?
Here.
We do have a quorum. My name's Lynn Senia, I'm the city clerk, and the reason I'm here today is because the chair and the co-chair could not be here, and according to council procedure, if they are both absent, the clerk shall take the chair and call the roll. If a quorum is present, those present shall elect by a majority of the present -- of those present, a chair, man or woman, for the meeting. So at that time, that's what we're gonna do, and at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to open nomination for --
Madam Clerk, I nominate Councilman --
We have to open the nominations. So I need a motion to open the nominations.
Motion to open the nomination?
I move that we open the nominations for temporary chair for this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay, the nominations for council --
Madam Chair?
-- temporary council chair were open.
I nominate Councilman Mo Baydun.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? And I have to repeat it three times, any other nominations? Councilman Baydun, do you accept that nomination?
I accept that nomination.
Okay, at this time, I would like to take a roll call. I guess everything --
Roll call, vote.
I guess you were on right there. Okay, Councilman Baydun, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You are now the temporary chair, and I do have to entertain one more motion to close that -- those nominations.
I have moved to close the nominations in the meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, Ali?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's all yours.
All right, guys, the gavel sits in my hand now. Just kidding.
Thank you for your patience.
Just today. Thank you, guys, honorable council members, mayor. Thank you, guys, all for being here today. We're gonna start off the Pledge of Allegiance today, since we have our very own state representative with us today who will lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. First up on the agenda, which, by the way, this is fresh, new, so forgive me, but we have 2A City Council Citation Burger Shack. I know Councilman -- the Honorable Councilman Ahmad is gonna go ahead and give a quick presentation, so let's go ahead and give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Councilman. Honorable council members, mayor, madam clerk, madam treasurer, state representative, Commissioner Kenezek, dear fellow residents, myself and fellow council members have been always in full support of our local businesses that drive our city economy forward. On behalf of Council Chair Abdallah and fellow council members, it's my honor this evening to present the City Council Citation to a local business in recognition of their contribution to the community and their outstanding achievements to their marketplace. Tonight, Council Citation goes to a local restaurant who started as a part-time food shack inside a gas station and moved to a free-standing building here in Dearborn Heights. Our O D this evening entered Detroit Best Burger yearly competition back in June 26 and won first place. Please help me welcome Ali Al-Joom from Burger Shack on 8/6/10. City of Dearborn Heights, City Council Citation, the Dearborn Heights City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Dearborn Heights, congratulate Burger Shack and Ali Al-Joom BBQ for winning the 2023 Detroit Burger Battle. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Just a quick update on that. Well, was it over 200 different burger joints were in on this, and Al-Joom's from Dearborn Heights won best burger out of 200 burgers, so congratulations on that, Mr. Al-Joom.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmen. Next up on the agenda is our very own --
Would you like to say something?
Oh, would you like to say some?
I would.
On the podium, please.
Hello, everyone, my name's Ali Al-Joom, and I'm honored to be here. I just want to thank everybody for having me. Thank you for all the support, and I love this community in Dearborn Heights.
Where's your story? Can you give us an address?
We're at 8606 North Telegraph in Dearborn Heights.
Just give us a brief history about your restaurant and what you offer, and how you've long been in Dearborn Heights.
We've been in Dearborn Heights since 2019. We offer halal kosher barbecue, burgers, milkshakes, and we strive to give you guys amazing food, clean, healthy, and we have different specials every month to keep it very exciting for you guys.
Thank you. So briefly about that competition, please. Can you tell us about the competition you were in in Detroit?
Oh, yeah, sure. So it was out of 20 restaurants that are all over Wayne County, and everybody provided a burger that best represents the business. I chose the Al-Joom Burger, which is a black Angus beef belly with smoked brisket, diced beef bacon, and out of 2,000 people, the customers choose the best three burgers that they like, and then the judges choose the top one.
And you won number one. Congratulations.
We won number one.
I hope you got us some samples today.
Soon, for sure.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys, for having me.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Next up, we have 2B, our Police Department presentation by our very own Police Chief, who is going to, I believe, bless us with some amazing awards.
Thank you very much. This is Officer Emily Murdock. She was awarded a department citation on July 20th at the Police Department for her work in apprehending a homicide suspect who in the city of Troy had assaulted a woman in a Target parking lot at gunpoint and then later killed a woman in the city of Detroit. Officer Murdock was out on patrol on July 11th in the late afternoon and was on patrol and said, "You know what? I think that's the homicide suspect that we -- that the other agencies have been looking for." She alerts her colleagues, she calls Detroit Police homicide, and the cavalry's coming, and about a mile away, this individual is taken into custody where he later confesses to both of those crimes. Now, God only knows what that person had planned for our community, right? I would say the best predictor of future performance is someone's past performance. We know that this person had abducted a woman in a parking lot and also killed another woman in the city of Detroit. So I am extremely proud of Officer Murdock. I know everyone else in the community is. It's been all over social media. The Chief of Police in Detroit has sent a thank you letter. I was just notified yesterday from the Hunter Club of Detroit that they're issuing a valor award to Officer Murdock at their upcoming award ceremony at the Detroit Athletic Club soon, so we're excited for that opportunity. And I just want to take this moment to celebrate all that's good here at the Police Department and someone that really went the extra mile to keep us all safe. So thank you so much, and I know that council has a citation here, and they're gonna grab all the signatures. There's some people out of town, but we don't want you to feel slighted on that, but we will get it back to you. And I did have a conversation with -- you wanna come on up?
Sure.
And ask that the state kinda recognize you as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Hart, and thank you, Officer Murdock. On behalf of myself, State Senator Sylvia Santana, and the entire state of Michigan, I just wanted to be here tonight to thank you for your bravery and your quick thinking. As Chief Hart mentioned, you know, we don't know, and thanks to you, we will never know what this suspect may have been planning for our local community. And I just want to thank you for really representing the best of who we are in the city of Dearborn Heights and the region. So thank you again, and I have a tribute from the state of Michigan for myself and Senator Santana, and we also have a state of Michigan flag and a U.S. flag for you, both of which have been flown over the state Capitol.
Thank you so much.
Man, those proclamations are a lot nicer than ours.
Chief, do you wanna -- So, you know, I wanna give Officer Murdock an opportunity to introduce her family that's here. I believe Hayes is here.
My son, yes, is here.
And Adam. Yep, so go ahead and introduce.
This is my year-and-a-half-year-old son, Hayes. He looks nothing like me, so I have to tell people he's mine. My fiance, Adam, my sister, my brother-in-law, Greg, they're both Dearborn police officers. My nephew, Logan, and my niece Shay. And I just wanna thank everyone for coming, and I hope my son looks back on this and says that Mom not only gave 100% in raising me, but to her job as well, and that moms really are superheroes, real-life superheroes, so I just hope I can inspire other little babies looking at me. I'm just nervous.
So how awesome is that, right?
It's very awesome.
A role model. Wanna talk a little bit about your heritage? Because I think that's something you should celebrate.
Yeah. So me and my sister are Native American. We were born in Canada, became citizens when we were both 17. We lived up on the reservation for a little while, went up to school at the Isabella County Reservation up in Mount Pleasant. We're also Delaware from on sea in London, Canada, as well, and we're just really proud of our heritage. We represent it really well, and we hope to raise our boys loving it as much as we do.
Good for you. Thank you very much for your time.
Officer Murdock, can I ask you what tribe you're from?
Yeah, so Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe in Mount Pleasant. It's bedtime, sorry. And Delaware and London, Ontario.
Good, good job.
I would say about -- you gotta do better.
Thank you, Officer. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Emily. We appreciate you. One more round of applause for everybody on that. Thank you, guys, so much. Next up, our very own Commissioner David Kenezek. Give him a round of applause. David said he had some updates for us, some news, and a new hairdo, so.
I did get a haircut today.
You did.
Thank you. So good evening to those in attendance today and those watching at home. Good evening to our mayor and our council. I received a phone call from Councilman Muscat earlier this week and asked if I would attend today's meeting to be able to provide just a brief update and then answer any questions that members of the council have regarding issues related to the county. The first thing I want to say -- can everybody hear me okay? Is that all right?
Yeah.
First thing I want to do is just give a thank you to Clerk Lynn Senia and her team. We all know about the election that took place on Tuesday. I had the opportunity to drive around to some of the precincts, meet with the staff, meet with the volunteers. Just another great and flawless election that was ran here in the city, so my hats off to you, Madam Treasurer. Second thing I'll say is a get well soon to Ray. So my understanding is that he's under the weather, else he would be chairing the meeting here today, Mr. Chair, so a get well soon to Ray, and I hope he's feeling better here soon. Totally random, but just a little bit of a fun piece here. As folks know, I represent Dearborn Heights as well as Inkster and Garden City. They have a summer theater program in Garden City. They're putting on a production of Annie, and I learned from the Garden City Theater Program that within Annie, there's a role that they traditionally reserve for elected officials. It's five lines. It is a puppet whose name is Wacky, and so you can read into what you want about the role of a puppet named Wacky being reserved for elected officials, but I did get the invitation to play that role. Our county executive, Warren Evans, also has accepted to play that role at one of the four different productions, so if you are available on August 19th at 7:00 p.m., just know that we'll be in the play at Garden City High School, the production of Annie.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. It's -- congrats or condolences, one of the two, I'm not sure. I wanted to mention, and this is such a timely invitation from Councilman Muscat, that Wayne County has partnered up with Focus Hope to do a series of free food giveaways for the next six Saturdays going through September. The first one is gonna be this Saturday, August 12th, at Garden City High School at 6,500 Middle Belt. The subsequent weeks, of course, we're gonna be in Livonia, Wyandotte, Highland Park, Redford, and Inkster. I brought one flyer. I know that's not enough for everybody, but it is scheduled to post on my Facebook page right about now. So if you're looking to get some more information, of course, I'm happy to be a resource for you, or feel free to access it on social media. Just David Kenezek. Fifth piece I want to talk about is -- have been really blessed lately for some opportunities to do work, I think, outside of the normal day-to-day of a county commissioner or a city council member, state rep, you name it. Opportunity to mow the grass along Beach Daily. I'm pretty sure I got in trouble for doing that, actually, but the reality is, when residents are calling in and complaining about overgrown grass, I can only tell them so many times, "We're getting to it," or "We're understaffed," or "We're working on it." And so decided just to load up my old Toro and head out there and do it myself. Similarly, had a chance to go out -- pardon me?
You didn't find it.
Thank you. She brought me some water when she saw me sweating at the side of the road. And then taken down some trees recently in Heinz Park. And so this has gotten me and some others thinking about opportunities to continue to give back to our residents in that way. And so with her permission, I wanted to share that, you know, many, many years ago, folks might remember Commissioner Diane Webb's Make a Senior Smile event, and this kind of fell off because of the pandemic, like most things did, but we're beyond that, and so we're looking to bring this back. And so I have to give credit to our treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton, who picked up the phone and called me and said, "David, I think it's time. Let's partner up and let's do this together." And so we're going to. We're coordinating right now with our senior senators here in Dearborn Heights. We're getting the list of our senior and disabled residents who don't have the ability to get out there and do that yard cleanup and do that debris cleanup themselves. We're looking at Saturday, November 4th. You don't have to write anything down. It's gonna be publicized and pushed out there, and we're gonna be looking for volunteers, but just know that that's something that in the past, I think, was a great success. We're gonna bring it out slowly, starting just with Dearborn Heights this year, and then, of course, look to roll that out to Garden City and Inkster in the subsequent years. So stay tuned for more on that. Next piece, want to talk a little bit about Van Born. I think folks who live in and around Van Born know that the county recently completed one stretch of the road, just a surface level blacktop repaving, if you will, and we just started on another section as well. And it's almost serendipitous, because a couple months ago, I got a call from Councilman Hassan Ahmed, who had raised a concern about the passage of students and other young people across Van Born from Taylor to Dearborn Heights and vice versa, going in and out of the library. And there is a light there. I think -- I believe it goes into a DBW yard for Dearborn Heights right there. And so there's the light there, but there's no crosswalk, right? And so he picked up the phone, he said, "David, you know, we're concerned about our kids in the community, we're concerned about safety. Is there something that we can do to make this safer for our kids?" The challenge being, if you're doing the whole shebang of the signs and the lights and the electricity, the whole nine yards, you're really talking a complete redig and redo of the road. I should probably silence my own cellphone when I'm talking, shouldn't I? And so it just so happened that while we're not doing that complete rebuild of Van Born along that stretch, we are redoing that surface level. I'd have to look to Mr. Deeb to have the actual engineering language, so I apologize for that, but since we're not doing the complete redig, he's continued to push. And he said, "Well, if we can't do the whole shebang, because we're not doing the complete rebuild, perhaps we could do the striping and the crosswalk approach, just to continue to draw more attention to it, to those who are driving and those who are crossing." And so we're pushing on that right now. We've gotten a commitment from the county that they're going to be installing that crosswalk there across Van Born, and so just wanted to let the residents know about that and share some credit.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenezek. That's great news. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, newsletter. Folks might have gotten my spring newsletter right about the May time period. We asked in that newsletter, "If there's things in here you like, let us know, we'll keep them. If there's things in here you don't see, let us know, and we'll try to get them on." And the one critique that I got of that newsletter was, "You're telling us about a lot of things that have happened or a lot of things that are going on. What about the things that are coming in the future?" That's a big gap there, David. And so for me, I said, "Well, it's my newsletter, but it's our newsletter, our district." And so folks on the council and folks in the administration will know that earlier this week, I sent out a solicitation to all of the communities that I represent. If I can build in stuff from the community, things that you want me to share with the 30,000 people that get this newsletter two times a year, I'm not looking to hide the ball, and I'm not looking to make it all about me. I'd like us to be able to collaborate, to get that content, to get that -- those graphics, those information pieces to be able to share with residents, and so I just wanted to raise it here to again say that we're open for business. And for the mayor and the council, the clerk, the treasurer, I know that Treasurer Hicks Clayton has already shared a few things, if you want something included, the space is open to you. Space is limited, but it's open to you. Am I still getting on time? You know I'm long-winded.
I'm gonna let you continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well, let's just --
Thank you for your latitude, Mr. Chair.
Somebody keeping time?
Yeah, there should be a clock, yeah. I'll say just two last things, and I'll turn it over to questions for folks. I'll share a little bit, and just know that more is coming. One of the things that used to frustrate me as the county commissioner, you know, all of us have a budget that we're able to work with on an annual basis. My goal is to always be responsible with those dollars and to not be frivolous with it, and so every year, since coming onto the commission, I've come in under budget. That money doesn't go to me, it doesn't go to you, it just goes back to Wayne County to do whatever they want to do with it. And I've always been frustrated with that, because why, if I'm being responsible with my office budget, do I have to give it back to somebody at the end of the year when I'd like to be investing it here in the community? And so we made the push to allow the county commissioners to use unexpended office budget funds to invest into local community nonprofits. This year, I came in $30,000 under budget. I received authorization to support two community organizations in my district. I selected one here in the city of Dearborn Heights. A little hint, it's athletics in nature, and it's in the south end of Dearborn Heights. And so you guys are clapping for everything today. You're clapping for everything today. So the reason I don't want to get -- you know, it's one of those things where until it's fully baked, right, you don't want to like completely say everything, you don't want to jinx it, but the paper has been submitted, the budget's been approved, the purchase order's been cut, the invoice has been submitted, and my understanding is the check is going out the door to this organization here tomorrow. And so as soon as I know it's in their hot little hands and in their bank account and paying for the new jerseys and the new helmets and the new everything that the kids need, we'll come back and we'll give another update. And again, not looking to make it all about me if and when that time comes. Would love to invite the mayor and the council to come down there and be a part of that formal check presentation. So I've talked about it a lot. The last thing I'll say is, I know, and I'll thank the city for sharing this on their Facebook page earlier this week. Folks recall in February, February 14th, when I was here and talking about the $10 million that was being appropriated to support the E Course Creek, that we are going to be phasing this out over a period of months and frankly, years. The mayor and I had an opportunity to be side-by-side at a meeting down river recently where they first ruled out what that plan was going to be. Residents who live along the creek are gonna be receiving this postcard. This is the same postcard that the city just shared on their Facebook page, and it's a postcard informing you about the work that we're doing, the money that's being invested, letting folks know that because you live along the creek, you're gonna look out the door one day, and we don't want you to be surprised that we're there taking a look at things or doing some work. And so we're asking residents for their feedback, we're asking them to take a survey to make sure that we have as good a picture as we can about the work that needs to be done there. The phone number, I'll just briefly share it twice for folks who might be listening at home. Any questions or any concerns about the work that's being done to E Course Creek or the money that's being given to the North Branch E Course Creek Drain Commission, 313-241-0704. That's 313-241-0704. The email address is info@nbecoursecreek.com. That is what I came prepared to discuss. I will stop talking, and I'll turn it over to council to see if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes?
If I had a question?
Councilman Coniston.
And thank you, Commissioner Kenezek, for coming tonight and updating us. Any park millage money for those -- get our tennis court redone at the Richard A. Young? I know that's been worked on for a while, and we discussed that briefly when I saw you at the polls.
Yeah. If the question is, "Is there parks' millage money to support -- you name the project, the answer is yes." The question's always gonna be the timing, and the question's gonna be the process, right? And so, you know, earlier this week, I had a really good conversation with Director Lauren Sell. You know, Kim, if I must speak, you know, tell me, we agreed on some things, we respectfully disagreed on some other things, and that's totally fine, it's just business. And I shared my desire for being more involved in the process as it relates to the distribution of the county funds and deciding how those are going to be spent here in the city. And so is there money there? Yes. I mean, every county commissioner receives an allocation every year to be able to give out to their district. The method that we've used previously, I know I've talked about this before, and it was in my maids newsletter, I've changed that formula a little bit to make it more equitable across the three communities that I represent. We had a system where, you know, Dearborn Heights just got the fattest chunk of the money, and that probably was great for Dearborn Heights, and then I looked at Garden City that was getting next to nothing, and then Inkster, which was, you know, pennies on the dollar. And so I've changed that formula now to say, "We'll put it on a three-year rotating basis. The city still retains the authority to decide to encumber those funds over a multi-year period if they want to do a bigger, more transformative project, but instead of getting a little bit every year, we're gonna give you a lot of bit on a three-year rotating basis." Inkster's getting that money first. Garden City is scheduled to receive it next year. Dearborn Heights is scheduled to receive it the year after that. In the case of Inkster, to your point about what could we be funding, and if the council and the administration was interested in supporting tennis courts, you name it, the answer is yes. The city of Inkster operates the Booker Dozier Recreation Center on Middle Belt. If you've been to it before, you know it's going through a resurgence right now, still needs a little bit more love. The entire $85,000 pot that I had to give out to the communities this year, Inkster has decided to dedicate to the Booker Dozier Center. So when that round comes around for Dearborn Heights, like I communicated to Director Lauren Sell, what I don't want to have is to wake up one day to a letter that says, "David, here's what we want, do what we say." I really want to be more collaborative in that process to make sure that we're dedicating the funds to things that I think are making the most and biggest impact here in the community.
We'll make sure you're included. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council member? Well, I have -- okay, go ahead.
Commissioner, are you gonna be here for the whole meeting or gonna be -- got more important things doing and skate out of here?
He's gonna stay.
I will do what I'm told, Councilman, I'll say that. So the plan was, I think folks know, my birthday is this weekend, and my family's currently up north, so I was supposed to be in the car up north after work today, but when Ray says jump, I usually say, "How high?" And so we're here at the council meeting. If you need me to stay for the whole thing, I'm happy to do that. It's not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, you should stay.
Okay. I can't wait.
Well, I have a question for you, Commissioner, and thank you for coming out here and for sharing your very long list with us, but I had a couple of questions, and I was having a question with Director Lauren Sell as well, and my question was, Van Houten Park, right there on Silvery Lane. I believe you told me we had X amount of money for the park, she told me we had X amount of money for the park. I think the number you told me was close to $300,000. Have we accepted that, and is the amount $300,000 on that?
Let me find the right paperwork here. What did she say? I want to make sure we're in a lineup. Yeah. yeah yeah that's that sounds right okay Van Houten let me flip to it you're all waiting in suspense now huh
please make it 300
yeah so so this is where I think the nuance matters right 300,000 dollar project versus 300,000 dollars from the county so this is a project that goes back a couple years and it's actually a good highlight of what I just shared about how the cities can choose to encumber funds over a period of years in order to put it back into a certain project that you know might take two years worth of funding to do so this goes back to 2018 2018 19 19 20 2021 what Wayne County has committed to do I don't want to add these numbers up in my head and be wrong but I'm pretty sure Director Lawrence sells right she is 118,407 dollars from the county that is supposed to be in addition to 105,000 dollars from the Dearborn Heights General Fund and 75,000 dollars from Dearborn Heights CDBG and so between the county GF and CDBG that gets you to the 298,000 dollar number or is what we would round to 300,000 dollar come up if I'm if I'm right or wrong come up it's the 300,000 dollar number
which park is that
Van Houten
oh Van Houten
the 75,000 that he's talking about is funds that we ended up having before I was director and the project wasn't started or wasn't done the money had to be reprogrammed and then any further questions with regards to that you can ask Director Jamal about but the 105,000 is money that I had budgeted in that current year and because the project wasn't done because of all of the other paperwork that wasn't done before me that money went back into our general fund so even though he's saying it was 300,000 but it was 300,000 in 2019
so what did we do with the money did the money go to the park
105 went back to the general fund the 75,000 went back to be reprogrammed through the CDBG budget and the rest is the 118,000 that I was talking about that is the money from the Wayne County Millage over the three-year period that he was just talked about
I know my question is so what has happened with the hundred money that went back to the funds and what happened to the 75,000 what did we do
the 75,000 was reprogrammed by the CDBG department which means the money was put someplace else for another project somewhere else in the city I wasn't the director then so I have no idea what it was put back to you'd have to refer
can you want to step up
and I don't even know that Jamal I don't even know if Hassan was even in then either I don't think so 2019 right yeah and then the 105 went back to our general fund because the projects weren't done
yeah go ahead Councilman
I believe basically if we don't if you don't go with the project you spend the money then you send it to the county for reimbursement correct that's how it works so since we didn't do it we didn't even get the money
it's a reimbursement grant but the other two things the one from the CDBG is a reimbursement grant as well but the 105 is out of our general budget that we just spend and it's budgeted for in our budgets so
so I I'm sorry before Mr. Jamal starts with my question is now private to the Commissioner is there any way we can reinstate that somehow and maybe start the project again or is it expired or
I think I'll say it sounds like we should probably have a conversation offline about what's going on here when the county awards these funds and and it's tricky right Ken makes a good point it's not a grant in that we award you the funds and then you wake up one day like listen I've watched the council meetings on YouTube the last couple months I know what's being done and said about this stuff it's it's not that Dearborn Heights wakes up one day and the money is in the pot and then where is it you know I think that was a very unfair criticism of the council and the administration to be candid with you it's all reimbursement based and so as we sit here today this 118,000 dollars from the county is sitting there waiting for receipts to be submitted by the city to be able to do that the the project plan that we received this 298,000 60,000 of it was for the demolition of the playscape of Van Houten something that I think frankly is needed but like tugs on my heartstrings a little bit because I I helped build it when I was a little away and then 238,000 for the installation of the new equipment and so when these funds get approved the window where the clock starts ticking on when they lapse it's a two-year window and so this was a project from 2021 it's 2023 I know that the county has been talking with the city about it sounds like if the money is not there to be able to to draw down these funds can we have an extension in order to make a decision about what we want to do and how we want to move forward I don't think and I'm certainly not going to oppose an extension if the city wants it but as it stands now and I'll let Director Jamal jump in we still have that 118 that's set aside to support that project if they want to do it
thank you Commissioner
yep
in regards to the extension that he's talking about that's going to be on the council agenda for the 22nd to extend the project to September 2024 because of the going out to bid process and and things like that so I'm fearful that we wouldn't be able to get everything done in time so I opted to go for the extension to make sure because now we have CDBG money all in together with the Wayne County money and so the project actually has become a lot larger and we're working with Wade Trim now in as far as making the RFPs for the playground equipment and stuff like that and want to make sure that we get it right because we have more funds now because we have a greater amount from the CDBG funds for this year so you'll see that on the August 22nd agenda
thank you Director
good evening my name is Hassan Jamal I am the CDE the Department of Community and Economic Development Director and respond to Chair Badun and Councilman Ahmed there is some miscommunication here well the project is actually a leveraged project started to be with 105 from the general fund back in 2021 that never happened meaning at the end of the fiscal year if you don't spend the money from the general fund it goes to the pot so there is no 100,000 105,000 dollars from the general fund to leverage the county fund because it was not put on the 2022 budget so end of the story there forget about the general fund what we did is we worked with the administration of sure and Director Lawrence sell and we allocated between last year and this year enough fund actually to leverage the 118,000 over 400,000 from CDBG because we focused on as you know and it's on the agenda today part of that we focused on rehabilitation of the people after the pandemic which is recreational recreation recreation so we concentrate on providing enough fund for two parks one in the north end which is Van Houten and one in the south end which is Heather Lane which is about 700,000 dollars allocated to that and started now we are in the process to do that and including what you requested you know for autistic for whatever it takes to cover all the disabled whatever this whatever the function of that disability is
thank you
so so the 75,000 dollars which with Director Lawrence sell talked about it was dedicated okay with ineligible function to actually address the ADA we can't address the ADA we have to do the whole you know structure so right now you should be fine I think you should be proud of yourself you approved enough money for recreation one in the north end which is behind you here and one in the south end which is Heather Lane
thank you so much
I just I want to say one more thing just because Commissioner Kinesik mentioned it was 60,000 allocated for the demolition we as you know you guys just approved it we actually had the demolition come in at 17,000 so we've got a little over 100,000 to add to what we have for the CDBG money for a really nice play structure what's that
still send them a receipt for 60,000
okay I'll do that
also while you're
but
yeah Councilor Chair
go ahead Councilman
I'm sorry I still have one one more question for I mean for Commissioner Kinesik I know
guys this is it
I don't know if you watched the council meeting last last time and somebody mentioned Central Park but the 45,000 and I know to be honest I'm sorry I was confused myself too because when the council body did vote on it back in July of 2022 I wasn't I was absent and I was still waiting for the 45,000 it happened to be it's the same 45,000 and this council body did approve it for a marquee for Canfield versus to be invested at the park which I was still waiting for the park to be rehab my wife asked me about it all the time but please I don't know if you can yeah I did a video on it too in September so so please if you can clarify
sure give me one second please so when I when I said earlier that the director and I had a spirited conversation earlier this week and and we disagreed on some things this this was one of them and again I want to reiterate that you know disagreeing is a part of this job how we do it I think is so important and and you know Director Lawrence sell has always been so respectful in in her role and I really appreciate having that relationship with her the next thing I'll do is something that I don't think you hear a lot of elected folks do and that is blame themselves because I messed up here and when this came to the county commission what was presented to me was documentation that said improvements to Central Park when I think improvements to Central Park and I think most members of the community would agree we're thinking some new mulch we're thinking fixing the fence we're thinking ADA compliance we're sprucing it up right and I was surprised to learn that that money had been dedicated or allocated to this this marquee I want to be crystal clear and I'm gonna say it twice because even when I say I want to be crystal clear it sounds like some folks don't hear me I'm not pointing the finger at anybody I think this was a county oversight just as much as anybody else so I'm happy to take that that burden that responsibility it's the burden of leadership but this is not what I think the money should be spent on when we dedicate 45,000 dollars to make improvements to Central Park I want to see improvements to Central Park I want to see improvements to the quality of life for our residents I want to see improvements to the facilities to the structures you name it in my opinion a brand new marquee does not achieve that objective it doesn't mean I don't think it's important it means that if my choices are a new sign or improvements to the park itself I'm going to pick improvements to the park itself and so I I didn't listen to the words of Ronald Reagan and trust but verify that's on me that's on me and so I went to the Wayne County Parks Division I said listen this is not where I think the money should be going we have as you recall a two-year window to spend it we've got time to change this don't we and they said yes we just have to restart the process the same way we did it the first time that starts with the council redoing a resolution of some kind about how you want this money this 45,000 dollars to be spent I think we can be a bit more clear on where it's going to be dedicated and how it's going to be used it'll come over to the county commission we'll run it through our processes as well and then we'll have a new agreement to be able to work off of so a mistake of course but a fixable one that I'm happy to take ownership of because I believe that there's better ways to be spending those dollars and again part of that miscommunication I think is what drove my communication with the director about making sure that I can be brought in earlier in these processes so that you know the documents that are coming to us from the get-go are good to go and easier to move forward so it's a good question
thank you Commissioner I mean I can't agree anymore to be honest with you but if you don't mind Councilor Chair I would love if this honorable body agree I would like to put a request for this resolution to come back for our next meeting on August 22nd if you can pass it on to Councilor Chair Abdullah
consider it done
thank you sir thank you Commissioner
thank you
Commissioner are you all set
that's up to you Councilman
Commissioner you've been up there for over 35 minutes I think your time is up
and no bottle of water either I appreciate the relationship for the folks again in the audience who are watching at home 313 224 0930 that's how you can get ahold of me 313 224 0930 and my email's davidkinesik@wayncounty.com
anyone else with any questions for the Commissioner
yes sir yeah that's why I thank you for your generosity and returning those funds unused funds for your office budget back to the city and that program you're mentioning I don't you didn't mention it did you but we know we're pretty pretty sure what it is and they need it really bad for what they are going through right now it's a great great thing you're doing
thank you thank you Council
thank you Commissioner Kinesik you can be seated
and I'll be staying the whole time at your request Mr. Chair
thank you
thank you next up on the agenda is the agenda approval
Councilor Chair
Councilman Ahmad
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of August 10 2023 as submitted with the removal of item 11B
support supported by Councilman
any discussion
all in favor please state aye
aye
the ayes have it next up on the agenda is approval of minutes
Councilor Chair
Councilman Constan
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of July 25 2023 as submitted
second
second invite Councilwoman Brier
any discussion on that
all in favor please state aye
aye
the ayes have it next up here we have minutes from the regular meeting of July 25 2023
Councilor Chair
Councilwoman Brier
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of July 25 23 as submitted
support supported by Councilman Constan any discussion on that all right all in favor please state aye
aye
the ayes have it only even though one person said it
everybody said it
okay next up on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims
Councilor Chair
Councilman Constan
I move that the Councilor Chair I'm sorry we missed number five public comments
I'm so sorry next up on the agenda mind just my first time doing this we have public hearings and comments on agenda items only remember this is only on agenda item please step up to the podium or anybody on Zoom
hear me
all right we got the Honorable Mr. Deeb are you speaking as a resident or as an employee for the city
as an employee
all right
so Council Chair just wanted to make one comment on the item 11A an update to the estimate was provided so actually the actual estimate now is revised estimate is it went from 200,000 that we receive actual numbers over the weekend and we're up to 232,400 dollars
we have that
that's the revised number now
that's what we have
yeah it is included
yeah
we put it in the recommended motion to council perfect I'm sorry so
thank you so much
yep
anyone else in the audience okay Mr. Abdulhaq
Mr. Chairman
please state your name
good evening Zuhair Abdulhaq Rosemary
no need for the numbers
I want to talk about the legal department bills Mr. Rajar is the one who heads all the all the attorneys who work for the city and when any bill or invoices submitted for approval and to be paid it has to be submitted in my opinion as the charter stated since he is the head of the legal department it must be signed by him then it should be signed by the mayor and nobody less than the mayor thank you very much
thank you anyone else in the audience anyone on Zoom okay all right next up is fund transfers and current claim
Councilor Chair
Councilman Constan
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims and ACH wire transfers 61 through 629 as submitted
a second for discussion
second by Councilman Ahmad any discussion on that
Councilor Chair
Councilman Ahmad
I think Councilwoman Brier she brought something on I think 63 correct
yes
please go ahead
63
yeah yeah that that's the one about from the fire department the event took place in 2014 and we're just now doing a billing
was it a typo
in 2023 no we have two items 603 and 608 and it totals about 9,000 dollars altogether
I'm not sure if the chief can
chief do you want to speak on that
yes yeah
I'm sure you probably like what is going
Broadspire Services
go ahead chief
603 and 608
so so Broadspire is our workers comp claims so 603 and 608 there there this could be related to an injury that happened like a previous injury so I'm not sure why the billing is coming through now but this is something that's that's not paid necessarily it's it's to the fire department but it's a workers comp claim so
an accident is the date of loss
the day is from 2014 chief
so so the person's injured on that day 2014 and then
So the person's injured on that day, 2014, and then they get kind of workers' compensation payments until continuing, this is the adjusting component, that's why the date is old.
Director King.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Trilla King here for the city of Dearborn Heights. You're inquiring about the Broadshire 603. The event date is 1/24/2014 because that was the date that they actually had the occurrence. The actual date of service was March 27, 2023. So this is an ongoing event that has been going on for nine years. And then the service date is 4/4/23. So this Broadshire is ongoing, these are issues that some people have been on disability or FMLA for quite a long time, workers' comp, so that's what that is.
Thank you, Director.
You're very welcome.
Any other discussion on this? Councilwoman, are you okay with that?
Yes, is that one of our firemen that was injured?
Yeah, I mean, we can't discuss all of it, but you can have an injury, you come back, and then that injury can have further complications.
All right.
Thank you for your services, Chief.
Thank you.
Persons on restricted duty work or something, a claim starts to be overseen.
All right, we're going to take this up to a vote. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we have reports from city officials. We have our CDD Director Jamal on 9A.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the program year 2023, 2024, CDBG Action Plan, authorize Mayor Bezi and CEDD Director Jamal to package, sign, and submit all required certifications electronically to HAD on behalf of the city before August 17th, as outlined in 9-8.
Second. Second by Councilman Wenzel. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next up, we have Fire Chief Rogan, purchase and payment of CPR mannequins.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of CPR mannequins and related accessories for a total cost of $4,347.12, which will be reimbursed by the Bowman Corwell Foundation. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from Kepler Owlay Account 101-335981000, as outlined in 9-B.
Second.
Second by our very own Honorable Nancy Breyer. Any discussion on that? Wow. Well, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we have 9C, Fire Chief Rogan, Public Assistance Grant Award Approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
All right, I'll make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council accept the Public Assistance Grant FEMA 4607-DR-MI from the state of Michigan in the amount of $545,303.66. Authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. These funds will reimburse the Water and Sewer Fund and will be tracked in GL Account 592000636.592, as outlined in 9C.
Second. Second by Councilman Conston?
Go with Conston.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, we have IT Director Cooper. Director Cooper, purchase and payment, Police Department Desktop Computers.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of 16 desktop computers for use in the police department for a total cost of $14,580, as based on my ideal pricing. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from the JAG funds, JAG funds, Account 101-300981056, as outlined in 9-D.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair, just a quick question to...
Councilman Ahmad.
Director Cooper, I know we did approve back, I think, last year, like, to change all the computers, so this wasn't included in the deal back then? I know the Windows 7 ones and...
It was not all the computers, a good replacement cycle doesn't do every single computer at the same time, so we don't have to front that money. Generally speaking, you should replace about 10 to 20% of your computers every year, so it's a continuous cycle.
And how old are these computers that we're replacing?
These ones are, if I remember, five to six years.
They're pretty much, they're done with the lifecycle.
In computer terms, they're old.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
The ayes have it. Next up, if, Director, if you want to stay standing up there. Next up is IT Director Cooper, BNE Contact Contract Amendment for additional security cameras and card access purchase.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amendments to the BAE contracts for the purchase and installation of a unified card system and the purchase and installation of an IP-based security camera system to install cameras and card access at the Justice Center and the Richard A. Young Recreation Center. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue the following payments. $21,478 from the police federal forfeiture fund account number 265330830060 for the Justice Center's additional cameras and card access, and $638.35 from Account 101258981000 for additional, for the additional camera at the Richard A. Young Center, as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Director Cooper, I'm sorry to bother you again, but I thought we just approved for the whole building in the city.
These are additional cameras, the what got approved before were replacement cameras, the systems that were in place between myself, Chief Hart, and Director Vanderplow. These are, you know, reviewing the Justice Center on the police side, this is what they want to do to make it even more secure for their department. The camera at Ray, literally, I believe it was like the day or two after you approved that motion, this is to cover the absentee ballot box over at Ray.
So that's for the Justice Center, so what about the Richard A. Young?
That's what I'm saying, the Ray one is because, like, a day or two after, get a, from the clerk, that we have to cover the absentee ballot box outside at Ray.
Yeah, that is not a solid... Any other questions?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. You know, I've been opposed to these key card reader access things or whatever, and it's this money, it's nice to have them in the camp, and the new cameras, nice to have them, but, you know, and when you compare a city to like a starving person, you don't buy a starving person Armani suit, you know, you feed them first. We have so many things that we have to do. If I asked every one of these council people to give them their top 10 projects they wanted to have to say done, these things wouldn't even be in the top 10. With this money we're spending on these car keys, nothing against the director, I mean, he's just doing his job, but we could cut down 100 trees, probably more, we could trim 400 trees with this money we're spending on these car key readers and new cameras. And we have residents constantly complain to us about trees, not one resident ever complained to me about the key card readers. And we spend so much money on other things, and every council person up here says, we got to cut these trees, we got to trim these trees, what's going on, get the list, but then we approve money for all kinds of other things. This is getting out of control, how we're spending our money. We have to get the root of the problem, technology's good. Like I say, you don't buy a poor man a brand-new suit, you feed him first, you get him clothed, you get him a job, then you get him a car, you take your steps. So, you know, I'm against anything that has to do with this, I'm voting no on anything, I mean, I'm just opposed to it, we're not thinking rationally, we're going for the Cadillac when our neighbor's driving a beat-up Volkswagen.
Well, hang on, guys, I just have some things to add on, thank you, are you all done there, Councilman?
I will say... This tree issue, I'm saying, this money that we spent on this could cut down more than 100 trees. We could hire a separate contractor and cut down 100 trees or trim four or five hundred, trim four or 500 trees.
I have to agree on a few things, I know the last time we were up here and we approved these, I believe you said you were going to share with us the big process, I don't believe...
I did, I shared it with the council chair.
I did share with everybody.
Yep.
Okay, I don't think I received it, but thank you for that. Yeah, I didn't receive that, but thank you for that, if you don't mind sending it back to me. Secondly, look, as much as I want to vote no on this, Councilman, with you, I believe our clerk has requested for some of these things so that you can have a camera facing the ballot box, correct? At the Richard A...
At the Richard A. Youngs.
And at the police station, right?
Where we have one at the police station.
It's the one that's there, I believe it's a bad angle, we want to redirect, have a new one so it's directly on it, there, that is the plan for it. I also do want to say, this is out of the federal forfeiture funds too, this does not affect our budget at all.
Okay.
Just that one thing.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Conston.
Well, two things, number one, there's been several incidents at the Richard Young Center, there was somebody basically flashed the newer person working behind the counter, and there was some prolonged time, you know, to prosecute them, there was some issues. And think about it, so suppose somebody, you know, prior to the general election, just takes a ballot box, they have to find those ballots, they have to, you know, get them, they have to trace them down. So it's important that those ballot boxes be watched and be secure.
Well, they're not in there right now, so they, from my speaking with the clerk, there's, they're not allowed to put any official ballots where if they're not being, you know, monitored by the cameras 24/7, is that correct?
Yeah, all three ballot boxes that we have have cameras on them right now.
Yes. Councilman Wenzel's comments about the trees, it's these, the funds that this money is coming out of Director Cooper is not a fund that, you couldn't use forfeiture money to cut down trees, unfortunately.
No, this is the federal forfeiture from the police, the...
Jake money.
The one additional at Ray, that is coming out of the 600 and some...
$638.35.
Correct.
Yeah.
Councilor Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just the one at the Justice Center is coming out of forfeiture money, correct?
Well, no, only... There's multiple at the Justice Center, yes, that's coming out of the federal forfeiture. The one camera for the $638, that's coming out of our general funds.
So we're spending $638.35 out of our budget.
Correct.
Correct, and the rest, the $21,478 is not coming, it's coming from the police.
Correct.
Okay. Look, I have to agree with the Councilman on this, you know, we are spending a lot of money in IT, and I know you're doing a great job, and this has nothing against you, I'm more for IT, but I'd rather see more for our streets, more for our trees, and I know that we are taking those steps, but, you know, like the Councilman states, where I stand on this, residents like to see something being done, a resident's not going to use a, you know, key fob, but for the purpose of security reasons, I understand. Does the chief, you have some things to say on that?
Yes, please, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is about the security of our employees.
Yeah.
I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on this for security reasons of the building, but if you'd like to come over and take a tour, and I could show you the doors, interior and exterior that are propped, at 12 o'clock, my little fob might work to get in my office or the back door, at 12:01, it may not. So this is a disaster, this is decades of neglect and money that's been spent that's bad money, and it's bad money being spent to help bad programs, okay? So this little key card right here is a way for us to get around our building, to track movements, to keep things secure, someone can easily defeat some of these things. So I understand and I appreciate the fact that there's a lot of issues that the city has to fund, but this, at the end of the day, is about our employee's security at the police department and movement from within the building itself. So I just wanted to add that, if that kind of persuades someone, it's for our staff.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, but I just wanted to add one more thing, and I don't think anybody is, I don't think the Councilman or myself are stating we want to want protection or security for our police officers, with no means, I mean, our officers live in our city, but we also are hearing from constituents on a day-to-day basis is, you know, our roads, you know, look terrible, color for what it is, and so when they're seeing us on council, who have a fiduciary duty to the city, who are, you know, ensuring that, you know, we're being fiscally responsible, they want to ensure that we're spending some of these dollars, their tax-paying dollars, back to the trees, to the roads, and to the police department, and if you know our budget, it is majority to police and fire.
Yeah.
And so we're, everybody on here can tell you that we support police and fire, that has no means, especially when it comes to security.
I would just add, Chief, I would just, you know, we just had someone try to get into our security with a gun, six weeks ago, stopped it, you know, right at the entrance, and all our employees are...
Thank you.
So just to add that.
So that's why I'm trying to open up the federal forfeiture funds to be a good colleague to other departments, that if we could spend forfeiture dollars on these things to free up money for our other department heads to have in their budget to take care of trees or whatever it is, but this is actually very important for us to have.
And I think this is more of just the council, it's just more of a vent, understanding, hearing it, because, look, at the end of the day, when a resident comes to us at, you know, at home or calls us and tells us on our phones, like, my tree needs to be trimmed, but we got to tell them there's a three-year waiting list, I mean, it's hard, and then they watch the council meeting and they're seeing us spend millions of dollars on, you know, security, which is great, and we need to. So I, you know, I think that it's more of just making the address, like, so that the administration hears us, the residents know that we're speaking on it, and we're echoing what they're asking for. Any other...
Councilman Baydoun? Yeah, I'm not, you know, I'm not against the using the forfeiture money, that's, you know, that's money that's, I'm going to probably look into that, see exactly what we can use that for, I'd like to know, all the things we could use that forfeiture money for, I'll do that a different time. That's not coming out of taxpayers' pockets, it's all these other programs, all the other... You know, I shared a story with several council people and some other people, you know, I came into the back door a few weeks ago or a month ago and was outside having a conversation with several people, and we all walked in with one key card, you know, a group of seven of us walked right in, I mean, so it's not high-tech unless they have, you know, facial recognition or something as you come in, you know, it doesn't tell you exactly the comings and goings, you don't check out when you go, you know, seven, 10 people can walk in without being recognized electronically and they can leave anytime they want. It's just, you know, it's nice to have all this stuff, but there's, you know, being a councilman, you know, a lot of our directors don't get any of the calls we get, you know, and we get a call and then we have to call the directors and they'll say, well, why didn't they just call us? You know, why are they calling you guys? Well, that's our job is to represent the people. I'd rather them call me and then I'll relay it to the director, you know, maybe sometimes coming from me might mean a little bit more than the massive amount of calls I get, but when someone calls me, the buck stops here. I do whatever I can, whatever it is, a trash can issue, some garbage issue, or, you know, blight issue, I write it down and I don't cross it off until the problem is resolved. So the buck stops here, and if anyone says, you know, we're tired of calling the department and making complaints, or calling the trash company, which I don't like, they should call the city, the city should take, address it to the trash company, but we're directed, the residents are called the trash company directory, directly, and a lot of times, they get so many things, those people there, they have hard days too. So call us, we'll take care of the issue the way that you want it taken care of on a personal basis, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Councilor Chair, I mean, to be honest, I can't agree more between your point and Councilman Wenzel's point, we do need to do something about the trees and different stuff in the city, but I am a firm believer in building the city from the inside out. I mean, those stuff we're talking about should have been done years ago, I mean, the city is basically falling apart, I mean, we're like 20 years behind. So in order to control our city, we need to fix all this stuff, we need to have control in order to provide better services for our residents. But Councilman Wenzel did bring a good point about maybe the face recognition or maybe somehow...
That was looked into, and you would not approve that funding, I'll tell you that right now.
But I mean, is there somehow we can mandate something, maybe, I mean, each one coming into the building?
Triple the cost that you already approved.
No, I mean, at least mandate that somebody coming into the building, they need to use their own key to go in, not a bunch of people.
That's everything, that's the whole point of all of this.
Maybe we can pass something to the administration, maybe we can pass a resolution that every employee coming in needs to use their own key fob.
Okay.
Chair, any other discussion, councilmen? This is the last one on this one, guys.
Well, yeah, and again, it's not one or the other. If we, this is forfeiture money. If we, there's, it's limited what we can use it for. It's not taxpayer money. And if it wasn't used for this, I think it would go back, you know, into the, it's restricted what we can use federal forfeiture money for.
Thank you.
So the money to cut down trees is, you know, we're talking about a whole separate source of funds, so it's not this versus that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna take this up as a vote. All in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Uh, madam clerk, we take real call.
Yes. Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Moby Dun?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
And Tom Wenzel?
No.
Motion carries for a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, director.
Thank you. Next up, we have ordinance and resolutions, city engineer bid, resolution authorization, the submission of community development block grant, disaster recovery CDBG, infrastructure grant application to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation.
Council chair?
Councilman Constan.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant, disaster recovery, infrastructure grant, application to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, requesting up to $1.8 million in CDBG DR infrastructure funds. In addition, designate Chief of Staff Mariana Hernandez as the environmental review certifying infrastructure funds.
Certified.
Officer, officer, excuse me. The person authorized to certify that the Michigan CDBG DR application, the person authorized to sign the grant agreement and the payment request, and the person authorized to execute any additional documents required to carry and complete the grant. Furthermore, amend the original resolution to clarify the city's commitment of local funds from local streets and/or major street funds in the amount of 232,400, 232,400, 10% of the project as submitted in the grant application as outlined in 11A.
Second?
Second, our councilman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Council chair?
Uh, councilman Wenzel.
Well, this has just so many things that concern me. Number one is they're asking for us to approve a 1.8 million. And the amount of money that, we were at a meeting, there was a few of us at the meeting back months ago, and we had all the people from the state and federal government there. We have access to four and a half million dollars, not only 1.8. And why are we, why are we only asking, from what I believe, this has to be in, this grant request has to be in by this, before the end of the month. And why are we, why are we not asking for the four and a half million, this situation?
So there are two projects that we're asking for. This is only one of them. The second project that we removed today was for the planning part. And the planning part, we're going to include the master plan for the city, which we are not ready at this point. We needed to procure the services. We had it on the street. We actually had interviewed, but it wasn't procured in accordance with federal guidelines, so we have to go back and re-procure that contract, and then present it to you. And the idea is that once we procure it with CFR 200 guidelines, then we will qualify for reimbursement. That's the reason why item 11B was removed. So ultimately, the full amount will be considered. But when we looked at the grant itself, and the amount of work that we wanted to do on the, on the Ecorse Creek, we determined, so the guidelines prohibited us, in this particular grant, you know, disaster recovery DR, from doing any work on the asset that we do not own, which is the creek itself. However, assets that we do own are permitted. So things like the flow through the bridges that we identified, and we recently had the updates on all the bridges. We did this load studies and condition assessment because we're required under the bridge program to do that. So we identified bridges in that location. So we're trying to kill two birds and one stone. Bridge that needed attention, and they're also located over the Ecorse Creek. And they are restricting the flow. These bridges, because they're pipes as opposed to a span bridge, right? So we identified the needs on the bridge side, and we tied it into a grant program that allows me to get 90% of funding for that work, as opposed to me doing 100% and paying for it. So we identified actually three bridges, but we don't have enough money to do all three, because I have to come up with 10% from the local budgets to match the 90% grant. So we are looking at the Polk Bridge and Hip Street Bridge over the Ecorse Creek to fund and then get funding for 90% of the work, so I can do, basically, kill two birds and one stone. One, allow for more flow to prevent, so it's flood mitigation. And then, two, update the bridges that are in terrible need of updates. So we're trying to get more done and match needs with available funding. So that's why myself, as the technical person on this, as opposed to Mr. Jamal, which he's going to be extremely valuable on the processing of the bridge, because CDBG money, right?
He's the money person.
But it's, but it is, it is a technical, we had to justify that technically. Why are we doing that? And that's why we're doing it.
So why, why are we asking for four and a half million when we can get it?
If you add, if you add the second, this is only one. We have time on that. The second, the second, when I come back with 11B, you're gonna be up there.
Basically, two projects.
Yeah, but 11B doesn't, won't expire?
No, it's not. We still have time until November.
Can't we just say, can we reword this and say, you know, we're gonna, we want to ask for 4.5 million dollars, and then this project include all maintenance of the Ecorse Creek, including bridge repair?
If you risk it, if you risk it and get-
In cooperation with Wayne County?
But if we risk it by the end of the month, we get nothing. I'd rather go for a 90% that's available and only commit to 10%. I can, I can do it either way.
Mr. Deeb, councilman, if that's okay.
Can I, we have our CDB director here.
Yeah, plus we have our Wayne County Commissioner.
Can you ask Buck, please?
While he's walking up there, can we ask, can I ask our Wayne County Commissioner, what were your thoughts on this when it was your approach or given to you to look at?
Well, hang on, Commissioner, one second. We're gonna have, we're gonna have our CDBG director. But Mr. Jamal?
No, no, no. No way.
Mr. Jamal?
But we can walk, we can talk together. I have to change my glasses today.
Hey, guys, come on, point of order. Mr. Jamal, 7:18, we're gonna go to 7:21, please.
Do you want me to sit down?
No, go ahead. We got three minutes on the clock.
No, no. Well, again, this particular CDBG, CDBG DR was a kind of unique in terms of how it was allocated to Michigan. It was an appropriation by the council responding to a presidential declaration of a disaster. Wayne County was part of it. The sad part about it was that the state of Michigan were allocated only three allocations. One for Detroit, 56 million, one for Deer, 127 million, and one for the state of Michigan, about 24 million, or something like that. You are with the state.
State is next to it.
Oh. So we got hold of that with the mayor, the chair, everybody. We got a little bit frustrated, but I was explained that, I was explained by the Fed that this has nothing to do with normal allocation. So, uh, shall by doing?
Yeah, come on. Thank you.
When you talk, you take minutes. So please listen. This is very important.
Thank you.
So here we are now. The county didn't receive no money, even though that Dearborn Heights was the worst, one of the worst affected by that flood. The event of June 25th and June 26th of 2021, I was down there, and I see it by myself, the mayor and everybody else. So we got hold of the state with the help of some of you here, without naming names, and the mayor, he reached out, and we say, "Okay, we need some money." And they say, "Okay, the state and the, actually, you know, kudos to the town government office." They reach out to me, says, "Okay, Mr. Jamal, here we are. What can we do?" I said, "We want money." So MEDC, which is the assigned agency, state agency, to manage the CDBG DR, DR meaning disaster relief. So CDBG is community block grant slash DR disaster relief.
Can I interrupt you real quick? I have a simple yes or no question. Should we do 1.8 million dollars, or should we do 4 million dollars? That's my only question, please.
Okay. Well, for, for me, for me, I can always present the point of view of the administrative branch and the, and the request to the legislative branch to make a decision. If you don't understand in general, okay, and in particular, what you are voting on, you will be making a lot of mistakes.
Correct.
So therefore, this particular grant, I wasn't involved in the process. I was involved in the initiation. So the process, I assigned that to engineer deep and to weight trim. We had a great weight trim grant, you know, municipal writer, so I assigned it. I was outside the technical aspect of it. I just learned about it only last week. Now, my point of view is we disseminated information as administration to the public that we are gonna do some cleanup for the creek, including bridges and all the things. And the state agreed to come to Dearborn Heights, responding to the mayor, responding to us, as being designated one of the worst affected by the flood. So here we are. Is the bridges are important, in my opinion? Absolutely. I won't differ from the technical, you know. But at the same time, can we apply for a maintenance? Because this is the only, the only federal grant that allow maintenance. Take my word. No other grant will allow maintenance.
Mr. Deeb disagrees.
So what? Well, Mr. Deeb can keep his comment to himself, because I, I know what I'm talking about. This is the only grant right now available for us for maintenance. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are not. So if we, if we can, or if you like to approve, that to increase our allocation request from the state, and here we have the great state representative, we have the most, the most affiliated politician who love Dearborn Heights, was raised with my kids. I know him, you, him, and Tarek, and everybody.
Thank you.
So we have a coalition here that with the mayor and his relations to the state, we can push that we can get four, 5 million dollars. We can do maintenance and coordination with the Wayne County Drain Commission, and coordination, and in addition to the 10 million dollars.
Mr. Jamal, I, thank you. I got your point. I think we're good from there. We're gonna make a decision here amongst the body.
Are you sure?
I thank you so much. You're very passionate, and I love you for that. Thank you so much. I think, you know, our time is up.
If you want to do anything, this is the way it is. Just amended to request, okay, a grant for maintaining the creek in Dearborn Heights, up to four, 5 million dollars, including the repair and maintenance of the bridges, and coordination-
Thank you.
-with Wayne County Drain Commission.
Mr. Jamal, thank you.
And we put it on this, on this guy over here.
Mr. Jamal, please.
Council chair.
Go ahead, mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, this grant, okay, so it has to be, there has to be a city asset. You can't, the creek is not city asset. It's the county, so it doesn't qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Council chair.
There you go.
Councilman Ahmad, I think councilman Wenzel was to argue. Are you all set? Oh, well, I did, I had, I was, I just learned something that, you know, the letterhead on this was economic development, and he said he had nothing to do with this, except initiating. And I thought this was coming from him, but now I see it come from our engineer.
You definitely got what I mean, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Was, you know, I had a question for our county commissioner. I mean, obviously, before you do any kind of bridge work over the creek, I imagine you've got to get some kind of approval or coordination with the county. Is this something that was discussed? Or how are we gonna work together with that?
Councilman, I don't have the familiarity with this budget item or this agenda item to be able to speak with any semblance of authority. And so I would really defer to the expertise and what Mr. Deeb has brought here today. If there's questions about it after the fact, of course, I'm happy to run them down. I can't imagine, though, that they would have had or moved forward with this without talking to others at the county. Perhaps Mr. Deeb could speak to that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Deeb.
So we did speak to the county. In fact, we worked closely on trying to identify what is allowed for us to do and what is the drain commission part to do. So even if I do get money for dredging the Ecorse Creek, it will have to be handed over to the county drain commission to do. But keep in mind, though, keep in mind, we also are working with the county closely on the dredging part, the 10 million ARPA money that is coming in from the west to the east. So we're coordinating that work. What we're trying to spend money is on our infrastructure, our, the city of Dearborn Heights' infrastructure, piping, the bridges, the things that we are responsible for. So that's why our application only applies to us. And one last comment, if I don't make that deadline by the end of the month and apply for that, we're risking not getting anything.
Mr. Deeb, I just have one question for you, but I think the mayor had something he wanted to add on. Do you want to go ahead real quick?
No, I'm just saying that for this, this particular grant, it has to be a city asset.
Yes.
The bridges are city asset. The creek is not.
Okay, so let me ask you-
So it doesn't qualify.
Let me ask you one question, Mr. Deeb, and I'm just gonna play devil's advocate real quick. There's been many times and many occasions where you've come to us and said, "We need to prove this for, like, our COSO bond. You know, it's gonna, we're gonna do five, six projects. We say it's gonna cost us 2 million dollars." You come back and saying, "Oh, my God, you know what? It turns out it's gonna be 2.5 million." I'm just giving you a quick example. Or it's gonna be 2.2 instead of 2.2 million. And so we're always doing that. Do you think maybe we should up it just a little bit, or is 1.8 gonna be sufficient enough? Because the worst thing we want to do is have to go back into our generality and say, "You know what? We need more money. We have to come out with it."
So the nature of construction, councilman, is that we can't go, even go out to bid before obtaining approval on the grant. So we're doing the best on our estimates. These are estimates. Now, you know, the worst that can happen is for us to, I don't want to risk losing the grant. So they tell you, if you start the process before you get an approval, then you just basically bought the project. And I don't want to do that.
Okay, so what if, what if you requested 2 million dollars for unbelievable bridges with glass and stairs and?
I don't know if I can sell that, but, you know, I can, I can sell a normal bridge.
I'm just, again-
I agree.
I'm just asking the question so that they're asked.
At this point, and that's why we went from 200 to 233, because we did 220, 232, because we actually went and got some real numbers, and we increased it from 200 to 232, 400. Again, these are the best numbers we have at 90, 10, you know. I think these are good numbers.
Thank you so much. Uh, go ahead, councilman.
Now, it's gotta be, this grant is for city assets only. Now, there's a big debate on what's, what part of the creek is owned by the city. It's like the banks. There have been debates before, the banks are owned by the city, and just the river bottom, the creek is bottom is owned by the city.
Okay, so I was, I received a real good explanation in the ARPA meeting that I attended about a month ago, five weeks ago, where the attorneys from the 10 million dollar ARPA project, so there were some attorneys, because we had, I had some issues trying to identify just that. So when we did the drone survey, I asked our consultant to try to figure out from the county assessor's office, what kind of easements do I have, you know, of the bridges? Because I looked at the original construction from way back, way before my time, that actually had easements. So what we found out, that in the county assessor's office, there are spot easements, not the entire drain, not the entire river. There were spot easements. In location A, we have, you know, easement, 15-foot easement from the top of the bank, which gives you the right to enter, but it's not continuous along the river on both sides. In that ARPA meeting, I asked the consulting attorney, who gave me a real good history lesson, that says, when the drain commission was established, the law that established that drain commission gave them a continuous easement. However, that was- However, that was before, uh, the 1957 Wayne County, um, um, is, assessor's office. So not all of these easements are recorded, meaning that you do have easements along the both river, even if they're not recorded. And for the most part, current owners of these properties may not be aware that they have a 15-foot easement. Because I know personally, I've seen people building, you know, garages and stuff all the way up to the bank, you know, river, there is no 15 or 30-foot easement. But 15 on the other side, apparently, we do have it. And the reason it came up in this conversation is for to spend the 10, the, uh, 10 million dollars, the county requires access for the contractors to go in for dredging, and they're using that 15-foot easement.
Thank you.
So why don't we, why don't we get to 4.5 million and, and clean up all these areas that we can work on? As you know, ever since this, ever since two years ago, since that flood in 2021, and then only 60 or 70 years before that, um, the city and everyone's been promising we're gonna clean the creek. And for the last two years, we've heard from the administration, we're gonna clean the creek, we're gonna do all this, we're gonna do all that, but not one boot has stepped foot in that creek with any projects at all. And that's, and that's, that's ridiculous, and it's horrendous that we, that we have to live with this. I'm, myself being a South Ender, I'm 100% in favor of the retention basin at the old incinerator plant. The Army Corps of Engineers stated several times, that's the only project, the only project that will keep South End from flooding.
Thank you.
But, uh, I mean, why can't we do that? Why can't we take 4.5 and work on all these areas that we have, we own?
Have you all done, Councilman?
Yeah.
Councilman Constance.
So, and this predates, um, Ali Deep, but for example, the footbridge across, uh, the creek that goes through Heather Lane Park, on the Powers and, um, Parker. The, the, years ago, they reinforced the bank with, uh, like a mesh of, uh, cinder blocks and, uh, material over it to keep the bank stable. And that, and they replaced a, there was a drain that came out and drained right into the creek. You know, that was a big improvement. The, it's, it's deemed a creek, so you can build up closer to it. John Canfield wanted, uh, if it was a river, then you can, you, you have to build further back. And a lot of those homes shouldn't have been built.
Thank you, Councilman, any other council members?
Councilor.
Councilman Ahmad.
So Mr. Deep, uh, thank you for, uh, going over this, but, so you're seeing, so 11B, is that coming back on the 22nd before the end of the month?
No, that one, we have more time on that, that one, we actually have more time.
So it's not part of the 4.5 million he's talking about?
It's not, we, we don't have the full estimates yet, but we do have more time on 11B than 11A.
But would that be the same grant or?
It's, it's more, what we have under that category, we have until November. So we, we have, we have time.
But this is under the same, like?
Umbrella, yes.
Umbrella of the 4.5 he's talking about? And, uh, I know you requested 1.8 million, are you really comfortable with that number? Or are we gonna be way under, you think, I mean, with all the inflation and stuff?
We can always amend this. I encourage you to approve this now, and we will work with the state representative on amending this. If we can amend it, we, we will do further investigation, okay, to find out if that's possible. So I encourage you right now, please approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal.
The, the deadline is 22th of August, so there is no, there is no, I, I do not oppose this. I encourage to apply for more money. We have the state here, we have the county, we have good relations. I came here to take my classes, but I had to say a couple words.
Thank you so much. All right, guys, we're gonna, we're gonna take this up, we're gonna take this up to a vote.
Councilor, I just, um, I just have one, one more thing. The, uh, the last further let it be resolved at the city of Dearborn Heights hereby assigned a chief of staff as environmental review certifying officer. I mean, that.
Mr. Deep, can you explain that for us?
Are those, you need credentials for that? Or what qualifications does the chief of staff have to, to, to do all this application work, grant agreement, payment request, personal authorization to execute additional documents, requiring carrying out complete grant? I mean, that, I mean, our, our chief of staff is, is, has got her hands full, and this is putting another, shouldn't maybe, uh, Director Jamal do this job? I mean.
Councilor. Please, please. Mr. Jamal, please come up to the podium, Mr. Deep, can you also, or maybe the mayor can answer. Go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor, we can't hear you. Is your microphone on?
Go ahead, Mayor, can you repeat that? Mr. Deep, I understand you're frustrated and things can get a little emotional, that's just.
I was expecting, uh, kudos, actually, not, you know, we're going for 90% funding that to offset and reduce costs to our, our taxpayers.
I know, Mr. Deep, but keep, keep in mind, Mr. Deep, please, just keep in mind, all the councilmen, I think, is trying to say is to want a good understanding.
No.
And, and, well, hang on, at least for myself, this is how I'm seeing it, is he's trying to get.
I'm not seeing it that way.
Okay, Mr. Deep, please. What I'd like to believe is he's trying to see an understanding. And what I'd also like to believe is if there's more money at the table, why can't we go for all of it?
There isn't.
Okay.
All I'm telling you is, so, so, um, um, this is not about who's trying to get credit here. This is a team effort. So we all have part to play in this. So I'm taking care of the, the, the technical part. Mr. Jamal is also on the, on the, um, in the group. We also hired, and you approved, a, a, a consultant to be, you know, to be the scout for grants. And he's the one that found that. And he's going, he's assisting us. We have an administrator on site, you know, uh, uh, Ms., uh, the chief of staff, to process base, basically payments and to make sure that we are within the limits. I don't see the issue here, it's not about who's getting the credit. This is a team effort, you can take my name off of it if you want.
It's not, it's not, I don't see people just trying to understand.
Ali, I never said anything like that at all, you misunderstood.
I'm just saying, this is a team effort, this is, we're supposed to approach it as a team.
Guys, point of order, come on.
We're part of the team too.
Councilman.
Put your name, I, I mean, it's really not about who gets.
It's up to us to ask questions, because this was just given to us a few days ago. And I'm sure everybody read it, but, you know, half the stuff on there, you just take it for granted that, you know, it's true, you know, but we're, it's up to us to ask questions about things like this. So people out there, now, now everyone out there knows about this. If we would just pass this, it would've been juke gone, and not one person in the city would even know anything about this project until you, they started tearing the, blocking all the bridges off. And, and, I'm insulted that, that someone's think I'm, I'm making people think that they're, I'm accusing people of being, getting credit for anything, I didn't say anything. I'm just concerned about this whole process. I mean, the Polk Street Bridge, I grew up on Polk Street, I played on that bridge as a kid my entire youth life. I know that bridge, I can, better than anyone in this room or anyone in this city probably. So I'm all in favor of that bridge, I know it's two tunnels. I went underneath them a million times in my life.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you.
I don't wanna be accused of saying someone's trying to get credit and credit stuff too, I mean, it's very unfair.
Guys, guys, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be the guy that hits the gavel, come on, guys. I, you know, this is my debut, let's just calm down for a second. Please, go to the council chair, uh, Councilwoman Breyer. Listen, guys, we have, I'm gonna give, this is the last, and we're gonna take this to a vote.
I think they're losing sight of the fact that we have 90% available as a grant.
Yes, I agree with you on that one.
And we only have 10%, and this is a great opportunity, and we shouldn't let it go by. Plus, Mariana is online, if you have questions.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, can you guys unmute our, our, Mariana, chief of staff, please?
Hi, everyone, um, Mariana Hernandez, chief of staff, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I just wanted to clarify two things. So with regards to the notice, there was a public hearing about this grant last week. Uh, Councilwoman Breyer did show up. The recording, as well as the presentation that Waitrim did, is available on our website. So I do encourage anyone that has questions to go there and review it. Again, this is the application stages of the application, it is a team effort. The administrator is Mr. Jamal for mostly the financial part of things, for the environmental side of things, as you are all aware, that's typically done by engineering consultants. And then they need somebody to sign off on those projects, which is typically done by Mr. Deep and myself in the mayor's office when we're reviewing those final projects. So again, this is a team effort, I do encourage you to apply, it's really just the beginning stages. The program will likely change by the time we actually get awarded the grant. It's just, we're in a tight deadline right now to submit, and that's all the comments I have. But if anybody has any questions, please let us know. Uh, our consultants are always available to answer any questions as well, if you have any further questions.
Thank you so much, guys. All right, guys, we're gonna take this up to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, Director Deep.
Thank you, Director Deep.
Give him a round of applause, please.
Guys, and I know, I know we just heard from our chief of staff, who states that this is a team effort. And, you know, I, I appreciate that, that, you know, that's, that's how you win, working together, collaborating, engaging together. Mr. Deep, I know this is something that you want kudos on, and thank you for that. So I'm gonna be the one that extends that kudos over to you. I know you seem frustrated, uh, but again, let's just continue to move forward from there.
Councilor, please extend it to Mr. Jamal too, I mean, he's on the money side too. How can I give it other way?
That's right.
My office is, is higher standard by me, I don't get credit because I'm in the office. I need the office credit for my experience.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Next up on the, uh, we have members of the public, comments from council members.
Councilor.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Councilor. First, I would like, uh, to thank, uh, Madam Clerk and her staff for an amazing job with the recent election, uh, thank you so much. Second, I would like to, um, thank all the residents who came out and voted. Was hoping for a better number, but hope more people would vote in November and practice their civil right. I'd like to congratulate everybody who won the primary, including you and Councilor for coming number one. And, uh, I'm sorry for the people that didn't work in their favor. And I do wanna thank them for, uh, you know, putting their time in, and they're willing to serve. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Councilor.
The lovely Councilwoman Breyer.
Okay, um, what we wanna know is, um, Mr. Jamal could possibly answer if there has been any money found to help make our administrator at the Eaton Center either a full-time employee or a raise at this time. Resources that he has or that Parks and Rec has, um, because we're on the verge of losing her, and she's an excellent person. And something has to be done, and we were told August, it's August 10th today.
I, I don't know if that direction would be directed to our CDBG director, I think that would be the administration. No, please, thank you. Thank you, sir, please.
He did.
Uh, Director Lawrence, would you like to speak on that?
Uh, well, currently, um, that hasn't been done, and that's actually in the hands of the human resources director.
Is our HR director online? Is our HR director online?
I do not see her.
Okay, anything else? Maybe, maybe we can get an email from the administration or the HR director, uh, Jamal, thank you. Any other questions, uh, Councilwoman?
Does she have a staff answer? Maybe she wants to answer now.
Mariana, go ahead, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello again, uh, again, I just wanted to update everybody, all full-time positions have to go through a civil service process, so it's not as easy as just, you know, hiring somebody full-time. We have to post it for a period of time and then do the interviews. So regardless of whether, um, the controller and the HR director have been able to found the funding for it, which, as you know, we don't have the funding because you just approved the budget. Um, and we would have to tackle into the general fund for that money, um, for our reserves. So I know that they're working on that aspect of it, but regardless, the process to hire a full-time position typically, typically takes a few months after they go through the testing and the interviews and everything else associated with us, our civil service process.
Mariana, I got a quick question for you.
Yeah?
Have you guys even initiated this stuff since the last meeting when we brought it up to you guys? Have we published it on, online?
Hmm, I believe Margaret is working on the job description for it, because it has to be a new post.
Can, can we?
So is the Berwin Center.
Can we, can we, uh, yeah, can we just go ahead and put that out there, uh, whenever you get a chance and kind of just follow up with us, please?
Yep, again, I just wanted to let you know it's not gonna happen from one meeting to another.
Okay, that's fine, if you could just give us an update on the next meeting. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Breyer, anything else?
I just wanted to see equity between both Berwin and Eaton.
I agree with you there on that one, Councilwoman. Uh, I will just have a few things to say. Today, myself and Councilman Ahmad, uh, had the honor of playing seat volleyball at the Eaton Center. It's actually my second time, I'm great, I, uh, I actually, I'm, I'm actually amazing, to be honest.
I'm sore.
Uh, you know, and, and you know, it was actually, we ended in a tie, it was 15-15. I like to believe it was 18-15, but they said that there's no winners and it always ends in a tie, but that's not really what happened. So I wanna thank the, you know, my friends at the Eaton Center for allowing me to be there. As I toured it as well, um, uh, as I toured that as well, uh, we continue to go through the bathrooms. Believe it or not, um, we've seen the bathrooms at the Eaton Center, they're kids' toilets. Uh, it's something my two-year-old son, it's actually up to my knees, the sink is up to my knees. You know, they need to be updated, I know that there's something that we've been working on. So I'm gonna ask the mayor, the administration, please, let's get some specs going on this, let's go out for bids, uh, and let's move forward on these three, four toilets and, and update the sinks. I kid you not, it is, it was almost impossible for me to wash my hands had I not got all the way down to wash my hands. And, and I tested it, um, you know, and so, guys, you have to remember something, our seniors, they're, they're requesting for this, this is something that needs to be done. And as far as the full-time position, look, this is somebody I, I've, I've been able to speak to for the last couple of weeks, she does so much for the Eaton Center. Even when they're replacing the windows, she said, I don't want it in my office. I want them to go to where the seniors are mostly staying inside the gymnasium. To me, that speaks value. And so also, uh, I got a phone call that the Richard A. Young Center has some leaks there. So Mayor, if you can, uh, maybe have building and maintenance take a look at that, I know, okay. Thank you so much for that. And then lastly, for our honorable clerk, thank you so much for everything that you've done this past week. I know it's not easy, I know the amount of stress that you're under, uh, but really, Dearborn Heights has the greatest clerk ever. Thank you so much. And then just one last thing, thank you to our state representative, Aaron, for being with us here today. Our county commissioner, Mr. Kinesik, also happy almost birthday. You got a great haircut also, so thanks to your amazing barber, I wonder which barber you go do? I think we share the same barber, but, uh, with that being said, any other council members?
Councilor, uh, do you mind just, uh, I know we were asked before by the chief of staff to ask us a body, so, so you had to request, can we make sure we have the okay from the body and go ahead and make it official to get bids and to move with the roof on Richard?
I mean, if everybody here agrees to that? Okay, the mayor said they're already looking at it.
Richard A. Young, sir?
And I talked to, uh, Mr. Blackburn today, and it is on his calendar, he's gonna be working on this stuff tomorrow for it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, any, any other council members?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor. I also wanna thank everybody who participated, uh, in the, uh, August primary, the candidates that ran. Congratulations to the candidates that won, and, um, to the candidates that put their name in and were not successful, it's, you know, they, they can run again, they're, they, we had a great pool of candidates. The primary election used to be in, um, September, and it was moved back to August. And then the, uh, school board elections, for example, were made in May, so make it even less of a turnout, and that's a shame. Only in this country can people just, you know, walk to the polls and vote, and now vote really for, for, via absentee, uh, weeks before the actual election. I have a friend who works for a big manufacturer and, um, went to China for a time. And, um, he says, whenever a company does business in China, they have to budget for money for, uh, basically payoffs and bribes to get anything done, because it's a central planned economy. So, you know, those people don't necessarily vote for their leaders. So, um, I'm sure everybody in November will read up about the candidates and, and vote, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilman Wentz.
Thank you, Councilman. Couple things, um, I'm gonna be asking, I don't know which department it is, but, um, I know we had, uh, approved the 911, our dispatch center, uh, improvements or renovations, and we'd like to get an update on that at our next meeting, so I'll be asking, um, I don't know, the billing department or the engineering department, Mr. Deep, for an update on that, because I've got some requests for that. And the, um, $170,000 grant for the body cam, I'm, I'm gonna be asking, uh, for an update on that, that's come up several times in my conversation with our residents. And, um, Councilman Baydoun said those toilets are, at the Eaton Center, are kids' toilets? They're not kids' toilets, they're infants' toilets. They are literally this high off the ground. They are literally this high off the ground.
They're embarrassing.
It's, and, and these, this, these, these toilets are in the office area where our, our girls work there. And there's one of the girls right there, Rose Trippapi, sitting right there. And you think she's going to squat down on that little toilet? If she does, she ain't getting up, you know? But we need those, we need those toilets addressed. That's for the people that work there. And we, we were talking about a full-time coordinator. We're talking about a full-time coordinator months ago. This wasn't something that was just brought up last meeting. It was brought up in our budgets, and, you know, the paperwork should have been in process already. You know, it should have been done. Like, you, you asked if we started it already after the last meeting, and the response we got from the council, of the whole council staff up here, all seven of us, said, "Yeah, let's go jump on that, do that, get that full-time coordinator." The ball should have been started rolling then. I mean, this is, this is something that takes months. It was, it was suggested months ago, so we should be hiring this person. This, this lady, Josie, is super, super girl. And like I say, you know, I always say something about the family, and something was brought up tonight that really hit home with me about family. It was from Officer Murdock. And she said that one of her biggest influences and the way she is now is because of her mother. And I urge all you parents out there to get involved with your children's lives. Don't just put them in front of that TV or hand them that iPad. And you get involved with them. Get involved with their schoolwork, get involved with their sports programs, get involved with your neighbors, that people that live across the street from you, a couple of doors down that you don't even know. Get involved with them, introduce yourselves to everybody. Let's make this a great community. And like I said, anybody that has a problem out there, if they've tried going through the channel, proper channels, and has a complaint, call me. Like I said, the buck will stop right here. I'll make sure it gets done.
Thank you.
And once again, thanks for our, our officials here, Aaron Burns and Dave Kanesek, for coming out and staying the whole meeting. Thank you very much. And, but thank, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilman. I also want to say, echo a few things. The Councilman is always talking about family. Remember, guys, spend a lot of time with family. Thank you, Councilman, for always bringing that up. Are there any other council members? Next up, we're going to move up to announcements from our, our administration. All right, we're going to start off up here, and then we'll go to Zoom after. Our Honorable Clerk, are you speaking as?
I'm speaking as the city clerk.
All right, we're excited to hear.
Thank you all for the acknowledgement. But that thousand-piece puzzle that I think I mentioned to you before as far as getting together for Election Day is not done just by me. Okay? I want to thank the 150-plus precinct absentee counting board and receiving board workers that made it a success. We have some here in the audience. If you would raise your hands, please, our workers, all of you. Thank you very much. I have, I know that, yep, I know Dana's online on Zoom, Sally's on Zoom. Georgianne, did you raise your hand? Okay. We could not do that without them. It's not just me. We are an excellent team, and I will brag about them. Okay? I'm very, very lucky, the city is very, very lucky to have such a phenomenal team. I do want to congratulate Dana. This was her very first on her own election, and she did a phenomenal job. So I am appreciative, I already said that. I'm appreciative and extremely proud of the phenomenal office staff, Dana, Georgianne, and Sally, our election crew, which we cannot do this without them. They're right behind here. This is all of our election stuff that really, this is where it happens. Alonda, who's been with us, I think she's said eight years, Marlene, Joanne, Karen, and Diane. I am also appreciative of our former Deputy Clerk, Kathy Birchfield, who has not gone away. She is there whenever we need her. We can just pick up the phone and she will be there for us. She was here on Election Day. She was a rover. She, she just helped us in any way that we need.
Heck, yeah, round of applause to her. She came back for us after retirement.
Yes, she did. I would like to thank Crestwood, District 7, Westwood, Dearborn Public Schools, as well as St. Sabina for hosting the polling locations. In addition, this day could not have been successful without the cooperation and assistance of Carolyn Smith at JFK Junior Library. We have Precinct 20 there. And Library Director McCaffrey for hosting at Caroline Kennedy Library and accommodatingness for all of our, with the availability of rooms for all of our election training, as well as our meetings. Thank you for our Parks and Rec Department and the Director for accommodating at the Berwin Center. Patty there is phenomenal. And at the Canfield Center, Cheryl and Tammy. In addition, thank you very much to our maintenance, building maintenance, Mike Blackburn and his team for delivering and picking, the picking up of the equipment. They have to deliver it to every polling location on Monday and pick it up on Wednesday. We are always appreciative of our police department for having, for being available to assist us whenever needed. And in addition to, I'm going to go back to Mike and his crew. We did get to, the state provided us with two additional absentee counting board or absentee ballot boxes, which one we have placed at the Justice Center, because the cameras were already there. They were right on it and went ahead and installed it within a day. And last but not least, I'd like to, a big thank you to our Crestwood High School Honor Society for their assistance at the polling location. We have a student at every single location to help a lot with the technology, but, I mean, because they were born with computers, right? And as well as the voters that came out and voted. Thank you to the citizens for their patience. This is the end of the night, and their patience while waiting for the election results. As you know, election results are no longer modummed. And so I know as a society, we're used to getting instant results. But now that they're not modummed, we have to wait until the precinct workers come back to City Hall.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, something is beeping.
I know, I think it's the microphones.
It's the microphone, they're echoing.
Do you have your phone on you or? Maybe it's Commissioner Kanesek.
Is it Commissioner Kanesek? I, I've heard it up there too today.
Yeah, it's happening.
So I don't know what to do. But I'll be trying to make the rest of it quick. Any?
Yell from there.
Do I get to yell?
Yeah, just yell from there.
Instead of modumming, the process now entails the tabulator cards from each precinct to come to City Hall. Everything has to be checked in, and then we have to input all of that and upload it to a dedicated computer, and we have to wait until all the results are in, which the AV counting board, we did move that back here. It used to be at the Richard Young Center. It's a little bit quicker now, as far as getting the AV. I didn't think it was too bad, actually. I think we got the results by 10:30, 10:10, 30.
11:45.
By the time they posted it, probably Wayne County. I'll go look and see. Anyway. But we did have, we did bring the, I know that a lot of the candidates went to each of the polling locations, because those results from the precincts are posted there. And we asked the chairs to bring them back here, those tabulated tapes, so we could post it here, so if they wanted to. So we're kind of going back a few years, but you're not going to get them as quick as you, you used to. So once all the voting results were returned and uploaded, they were sent securely to Wayne County. And, I'm trying to think about that. Okay. Thank you to all of the candidates, like Councilman Constance, and for their willingness to serve our community. Congratulations to the successful candidates who will appear on the November 7th ballot. For all those candidates, this is just a reminder that per our sign ordinance, those signs need to be removed from the yards or wherever they're at within five days of the election.
Yep.
So anybody out there, make sure they're gone, okay? Because that way you can have ordinance to other things. I do want to let you know, though, that now that this election is over, Dana and I are going to start seriously, well, we've been thinking about it, Prop 2. Okay? And our state rep is here, our commissioner's here. We may be, you know, turning to you for whatever we need. I know, what's that? Did they turn it down now? Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
But no squeak, okay. Wayne County has a phenomenal team that I can always look to for, as far as the Clerk's office. And one last thing. I think I want a competition going on here, okay? Who do you think, which precinct had the highest turnout for this election?
Addison.
It's going to be in this 11. Okay. They had 16.44. I just uploaded everything.
Let's give them a hand, the precinct 11.
And then the lowest one, I won't mention which one, but it was not quite 6%, okay?
Caroline Kennedy.
No, which one?
Oh, that's my precinct.
JFK, yes. Well, I want, I want to say something to that, though, man. Guys, Madam Clerk, don't forget, there was also construction being done, thanks to Wayne County and our commissioner for all that construction right around there. And there was, I think it was only four votes by noon, so.
I think there was like 47 there.
Yeah, there was a lot of construction.
So, but we can get them ready for November to get out there and vote.
Thank you.
So in, happy early birthday to Commissioner Kanesek. Have a great one.
Guys, before we move forward, I think also, you know, I know the mayor recently lost his father, and I'd like to, and we should have did this in the beginning, to have a moment of silence for the mayor, if we can do that real quick.
Mr. Mayor, I'm so sorry for your loss.
Hi. I'm speaking as the Director, Director Lawrence How with Parks and Recreation Department. I would like to inform the council that our gymnastics company has moved out of Dearborn Heights to Garden City due to what they felt was being undervalued by the city council. They watched the council meeting in regard to the changing of the poll from Canfield to Crestwood High School. They felt things were said about them that were very disrespectful. Last year, we made $43,000 in revenue from them, and they are still recovering from COVID. Their gymnastic classes, kids' nights out, birthday parties, and day camps served thousands of our youth residents since 2006. It is a sad day when we lose such a great program for our youth and residents and such a good source of revenue which our city so desperately needs. Our youth programs took a large hit from this happening. And then also, I'd like to thank the years, actually 17 years, that the DPW workers and my staff helped tear down the equipment and put the equipment back up. And it's a very upsetting thing.
Thank you. I, I just want to add a few things here. I remember that discussion vividly, and I don't think one person, including myself, who kind of spearheaded that, said anything about the actual gymnastics person at all.
Not the person, the company.
Or, I don't even know who the company is or the person. But, but I will say, ma'am, that if they don't want to take part in Dearborn Heights, we have the greatest director with us, and I think you're going to do a phenomenal job in finding a way to continue to fill in that vacancy. I think that the facility there shouldn't only be for gymnastics. The good news is, we're a growing community that can, that you can rent that space out every single day for the rest of the year. And I think you would, you would be, make a lot more money on that facility.
You will not. Prior to gymnastics, we were a rental facility, basically, for parties, and mostly the parties were non-residents. You can't use it for a gym facility because of the way that it is. It's not regulation size. It has, I don't know, vinyl-type floor, tile floor. And you can't do rental, and you can't do kids' activities at the same time, because there's no storage.
Why don't you turn it into a banquet hall?
Well, wouldn't have been much better as a gymnastics program that served day camp kids, youth. Our youth program took a huge hit.
You can do that still. You just don't have to use that company. If they don't want to be a part of Dearborn Heights, I can openly say, thank you so much for the years.
It's not that they want to not be. They would have been and would have continued. It was too difficult and too hard on their equipment to tear it down and, and, and pick it up. As you recall, I did email you and asked you to come, and, and you thought it was just basically me being vindictive, and it wasn't. After that, we still didn't get anybody to help, you know, other than the DPW workers and my staff. So each election was very difficult for us. It was more difficult for them, because they had to replace parts of their flooring. You know, it's a program that I brought into Dearborn Heights, and, and I worked to build it up, and it became very, very successful, and now we've lost it. It's kind of an, at an end of an era for me. So if I get emotional, that's why.
Thank you. Our Treasurer?
Good evening. I just want to remind everyone that this Tuesday, August 15th, is the last day to pay your summer taxes without penalty. I do want to say thank you to our Treasurer's Office staff for their hard work. It's been very busy for everyone. But also thank our residents as well, who have been very patient, very kind, very cordial as they come to the window or whatever ways they choose to pay. We appreciate every phone call, every email, every thank you, every you need to do this a different way, whatever that may be. We appreciate the input and feedback. So again, that is Tuesday, August 15th. A half a percent applies August 16th. And every month, the first of each month thereafter is a half a percent, added on up to 3%. One thing I want to remind everybody is, is that we have service days scheduled coming up on August 18th and August 25th. This is by appointment for any resident that needs some assistance navigating through the MYHALF, which is the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, or your deferment for your taxes. So deferment for taxes, the form is available online, but if you'd like us to mail it out to you, we can do that. The deadline for deferment is September 15th, and there are criteria that have to be met, including income under $40,000 a year. It has to be your principal residence. You could check off one of the boxes, either over 62 years of age, have a disability, blind, quadriplegic, or eligible veteran, but that's all on the application as well. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
You and I spoke earlier about the bank accounts. Is that something you wanted to bring up tonight?
I will do that the next meeting?
The next meeting, okay.
Thank you.
And one other thing is, our Treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton, is, is very active in social media, and most of the time it's to help out residents who have questions, because she's so knowledgeable about activities, programs, people, numbers, people to call. And, and she's still constantly bombarded with criticism about her capability to hold in this position. And she occasionally posts things on Facebook that, you know, shows, says the degrees that she's obtained. And we still, and then someone will come on and say, "Your arm must be tired for patting yourself on the back." It's, it's horrible that people do this to her. She's only doing this to show people, hey, I am qualified. You voted for me. I'm the, I'm your treasurer. And she's, she's, she's doing a fantastic job, and she helps out the residents, you know, constantly. And, and to boot, these programs that she's taking, these educational classes, she's putting up the money herself. These aren't city-funded classes she's taking. She's putting up the money herself. So all the harassment she's getting is uncalled for. She's a great person, a great treasurer, a good treasurer, and going to be a great treasurer. She keeps on going the way she is, she's doing a fantastic job. And I personally want to thank you for everything you're doing for our city.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. May I say something real quick to that, and thank you for that? What I would hope is that there are others out there that need to be uplifted, inspired, and encouraged. So if anything, I want you to look at my life, what I've been through, what has happened. And we all know some of these things, but know that you can keep going. Know that there's hope. Encourage each other, support one another, and be positive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't think Councilman Dave Abdullah's had this many, round of applause in a council meeting. I'm just saying. I know next up we have Mr. Con, Mayor, is there anything you have to say? Perfect, okay. We have, next up on Zoom, Mr. Conrad, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Robert Conrad, Public Works Director. Wanted to give you the annual update on the painting of the school crossings. Since the last council meeting, we have not made any further progress due to the large rain event that we had. Did a lot of tree damage. We've been doing a lot of tree cleanup. But we do have everything cleaned up from that storm for the most part, we do have everything cleaned up from that storm for the most part. And we do plan on getting back to painting of the street crossings. We have five crossings left to complete. We don't think it will take us more than a week to complete those, but we do need cooperation with, uh, dry weather and, uh, dry streets to do it. So, uh, providing those things cooperate with us, I would, I'm planning on being able to report at the next council meeting that, uh, we've completed the painting of all the, uh, school crossings.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Director. And I also want you to know, I know the men and women in DPW have been really overworked, uh, with, with the storms and the trees and the limbs that have been out. And, uh, I mean, I see you guys. I've also been seeing a lot of street sweepers out there. So I really want to thank you guys so much for that. And let's keep up that good work. Any other?
Counselor Chair, actually, that's why I was going to mention the street sweeper. I've been seeing it more often. Can you give us more update on it, Director? Like, what's the schedule for the street sweepers?
So, so typically the, the, the street sweeping, we do two sweeps in the spring, uh, when all the, you know, first to get all the winter debris up. And then the second one is to get, you know, all the, uh, helicopters and seeds that fall from the trees that, you know, will block our, our storm drains. And then we pride it primarily during the summertime, you know, only sweep the streets on an as-needed basis until fall, when, uh, we want to get the streets all cleaned up before winter. So, you know, we have good drainage in the winter. Um, this, this rain event was so severe in, you know, caused a lot of little tree debris. I mean, even if big limbs didn't come down, it seemed like, you know, the, the streets were littered with, you know, a bunch of leaves and small branches and, you know, just little things that, you know, were better to be swept up. So, you know, we did, are, are nearly complete with a, a third cycle of sweeping. Um, but that was primarily because of all the debris, uh, that was going to block the catch basins when it rained and things like that. Um, but, uh, we're, we're nearly complete with that. So, you know, we should, like I say, uh, be able to get back to painting lane lines.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Counselor Chair, I'm sorry. That said, I would like to remind all the residents to please keep your garbage bins on the lawn. I've been seeing it on the street. And maybe if we can, uh, ask Priority Waste to make sure when they pick it up, to take it, put it back on the lawn. Because I've seen it after they pick it up, they put it back on the street.
Yep.
So, um, so in order to have all the street sweeper, making sure, cleaning all the streets.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Councilwoman Ryer?
I did have comments, however, that the paint is not dark enough on the crossing areas. And also, is it possible to put the word "school" at that area as well?
And I had those questions.
Robert Conrad. So there may be some that we may need to go back and refresh, um, you know, because it had, because we did miss a year of painting. So, you know, we may have to go through, I hope we don't have to repaint all of them again. But, uh, you know, I guess the ones that maybe were more severely faded because we missed a year of painting will need a, a second application of paint. Um, and I think as far as, you know, the school labelings, if they have the school labelings there now, I think, uh, you know, I'll check and see if we have the stencils to, to freshen those up. If they don't, um, I would like our consultant that does all of our safety work to, uh, at least give us recommendations. I know they were going to review all these locations, but, uh, I wouldn't want to just haphazardly throw out, you know, the word "school" on a pavement if it isn't in a proper location. So, you know, we would need someone to consult with us as to, you know, one, are they required to be in that area? And where are they required to be if we're placing them? So, uh, but yes, if they're there, I, I'll check and see if we have the stencils to refresh those.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I actually had that question asked while I was with you, Councilwoman. Thank you for that. Okay. I think next up we have Director Disham. Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Go ahead. You please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me, Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you very much. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. This is, uh, Bill Disham, Director of Ordinance and Force of Manual Control. Uh, I just wanted to give a brief update on what's going on in the ordinance department. Um, in the month of July, our department responded to approximately eleven hundred enforcements and issued a hundred and thirty-six tickets, uh, during this busy time. We're also in the process of moving over to the Justice Center. Uh, the move is expected to be completed by the end of next week. Um, I'd like to thank the clerk for mentioning, uh, the signs that need to be removed. Uh, that was kind of a distraction recently. And I also like to thank Councilman Ahmad for making mention of the, the trash cans not being, uh, put in the street. Uh, that's important as well. Um, we've had some complaints. Uh, we've been going down Ford Road, uh, recently on grass complaints. Uh, another one of those things that ties up a, a great deal of our time. Uh, we actually are issuing tickets to businesses along that corridor for lack of, um, maintenance on their property. Um, please remember to cut your grass and weeds. I'm sure, uh, Councilman Muscat, if he was with us, he'd appreciate me saying that. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my staff, um, for all of your hard work and dedication, especially during this move. Uh, we've been very busy. Uh, this probably wasn't the ideal time for us to move, but, uh, this is, this is a decision that was made. So we're moving forward. So, uh, thank you. And also congratulations to the city clerk's office and all the, uh, hardworking employees there. Um, they did a wonderful job. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Council Chair. That's all.
Thank you so much. All right. Do we have any other, uh, comments from administration? Any other comments? Great. Now we're going to go ahead and move this open to public comments. Uh, we are going to also just remind you guys, you have three minutes. Please be respectful. Councilman Ahmad here is going to be holding up the sign. Uh, we're going to start with, um, in person, and then we'll go over to Zoom. Mrs. Saputo, please state your name, your address, without giving us the numbers.
Uh, okay.
The city that you're in.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Saputo, and I live on Oakland Drive. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-six, which is thirty-seven years. When I moved in, if I had a problem, I called the mayor's office, stated my problem, and actually got to speak with Mayor Canfield. She always took care of the, any problems I had. Even when Mayor Piletka was in office, my problems were taken care of, and ordinance did a hell of a job. The longer I live in the city, the more frightened I become because it seems no one wants to do their job. City Hall is only open four days a week. That's unacceptable. The city properties are looking worse and worse. And Michael McCaffrey actually went to the JFK Library a couple of years ago, pulled weeds and laid mulch, another thing that's not acceptable. The alley behind my house has always been taken care of by the city. And I want to say, as far as I'm concerned, the DPW does a hell of a job. I've always been very happy with them. Um, usually when the alley gets overgrown, I call the DPW. And in years past, there's never been a problem. Okay, we'll be out. We'll take care of it. And they do. This year, Ron told me that the responsibility of the alley belongs to the homeowner who butts up against the alley. That's not right. And that alley is so overgrown that there is no way that the residents can take care of it. Um, and at one time, any decision by the Planning Commission, um, went to, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Even though I have weeds cut behind my house in the alley, the rest of it is so overgrown, it's not possible for homeowner to handle it, nor should they. With inkster dropping dead bodies in this alley, it needs to be maintained by the city. Did you know that about the dead body in my alley?
No.
Okay. Well, a guy died of an overdose, an inkster, and somebody got in the car, drove the dead body to the alley behind my house and left the car and the body there. Um, at one time, any decision made by the Planning Commission went to the council for final approval or denial. I was also told that the ordinance was changed around two thousand seven. It was changed to ensure that the council wouldn't be sued. I was also told that the city attorney is looking at this ordinance. We elect a city council to stand up for our residents. With fourteen hundred signature, signatures against the car wash in Ford Road, I would think that if all was, if, think that if it was still the responsibility of the city council to review that decision, they would have said no. That's why we elect you to stand up for us. I've also been told that each applicant must eat eight, meet eight or nine criteria. If they meet that, the Planning Commission must approve their application. Um, and our neighbors attended the Planning Commission and.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you twenty more seconds, ma'am.
Okay. And, um, one of them, two of them stood up and said, we believe that you, people on the Planning Commission, are not listening to us, that our, our feelings don't matter. And isn't that sad when a resident can say that about their city? Um, I've already lost one neighbor because of this proposed car wash on Michigan Avenue. She was so angry at the last Planning Commission that she just, she just moved out. And she's putting her house up for, for sale. Um, it also seems to me that if you have money in this city, you expect to have what you want, which was evidenced by the rude and disrespectful behavior of a couple of residents to the Planning Commission.
Guys, don't be from the audience. Please, ma'am, I'm so sorry. Your time is actually up.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Well, I, one thing I would like to ask is, would one of you call the DPW and please ask them?
Can you do me a favor? Can you put, can you give Georgia Ann your name and number?
Yeah.
And somebody from the administration will reach out to you first thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah, okay.
Or, or Monday and that since for.
What?
Tomorrow's Friday. I'm sorry. But I'm thinking today's Tuesday. Okay? Uh, just please state your name, address, former corporation, council, street address. Don't give us the numbers.
First of all, uh, did Council Chair Protem Muscat have an opportunity to speak to you? He granted me an extra minute yesterday.
No, nobody, but I, I will grant you an extra minute.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Uh, Gary Myotki, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights. I want to thank, uh, Council Chair Protem for the extra minute and thank you for honoring it as well, Ad-hoc Chair Baydun. Today I need to address the current state of our police department and why it's in the unfortunate condition that it is. There's a narrative that has been spun that our department's problems stem from our police officers and supervisors being paid too low, and that the problems could end up being addressed as long as we paid them more. My point in talking today is not to say that the pay should not increase. Indeed, that might be the best thing to do, or a thing that needs to end up being done. My point in speaking today is to say that this narrative about low pay is a false narrative. And anyone, and especially council members who must, who want to be taken seriously, need to move on from this false narrative and address the real issues. For many years, Dearborn Heights Police Department has been a, considered a destination department. While the pay was not strong, Dearborn Heights PD offered something other departments could not. Outstanding benefits, including a drop program, promotions all the way through chief by way of Act seventy-eight, stability for, uh, relative to many departments, and frankly, a place that you could spend your career. These things really provided employees with an incentive to stay and grow with the city. But it also underscores why the narrative is false. That is, because our loss of officers is a retention problem. It is not a recruitment problem. The officers and supervisors who have left in droves came to Dearborn Heights Police Department, knowing that the pay was lows and chose to stay here or come here anyway. So why are they retiring, going other places, otherwise lessening their pensions from the city, and many of them losing their seniority, their job security and otherwise? This narrative makes no sense. It does not explain what's happening. Further, especially for those with eight to fifteen years of time, they're giving up their seniority, their security relationships that they've had for years and risking everything that they had, all to start over, brand new at a new department. Again, this narrative is false. And this is not something done by employees just to improve pay. No, this is something done by employees who perceive themselves to be in an awful work environment. And before they do leave, they want to believe that they can improve things, but they don't believe that because they've come to the conclusion that it's not going to get any better. And I say this not just as a resident, but as an attorney who has practiced law and labor and employment for just shy of thirty-five years. So why did this not happen? Why do we not have a functioning department? We've heard a lot about things having to deal with, for example, Joey's tragic situation. We don't have a traffic bureau anymore. We lost the officers in the traffic bureau to other departments. They left. Indeed, if you want to end up looking at something, you could look at the Dearborn Heights Fire Department and realize that the Dearborn Heights Fire Department has had no mass exodus of officers and supervisors. And that's not to take away from the leadership of the fire. It is simply to say, you can't blame this on pay. And what I mean by dysfunction, thirty-four officers and supervisors who have left. I mean, a department, no traffic department, a skeletal detective bureau. And I believe the special ops is gone. And finally.
I'm so sorry. Your time is up.
Oh, can I, can I complete one little point?
I'll give you, I'll give you six, I'll give you eight seconds, please.
Okay.
Five's too short.
Then I'll, then I'll have to be coming back again. But I think what it really comes down to is this. The fault for the unfortunate state of our police department is on the mayor, the police chief, and the directors whose poor leadership has failed the city, its employees and residents alike. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
I just want to mention something since somebody's actually leaving the residence again. And that's very shameful. Somebody that drew, let me just hear, two-point-seven million dollars paycheck since he worked for the city's attorney for him to mislead the residents. So disgruntled because he was not working, excuse me.
It's not a debate.
Counselor Chair, point of order.
Please, point of order.
Okay, so I understand why he's pissed off because, like I said, he's not working for the city, got two-point-seven million dollars. There was a lot of issues that were present when he was here and he was aware of, and he failed to mention to the council. And the council body has been in meetings that we discuss in close sessions of some of the issues that we had. And by somebody to misinform their residents why some of these left, there's a lot of active investigations on some people that left already. I have a, a document, twenty-one pages. Okay, we have the Department of Justice, which he failed to mention to the residents, that we actually asked them, between myself and the chief, to come here and help us try to transform our police department to world-class department. Yes, I do agree, the fire department had great leadership. Obviously, we didn't have that in the police department. We do have a lot of issues over there. We're trying to propel our city forward, trying to make the police department world-class police department. And that's one of the reasons why we brought DOJ. And him as attorney has been in closed meetings, previous attorney, I'm sorry, correct that, the previous attorney for the city, he was privy to that information. And he's failed to even mention that. And I tell you one thing, I am going to file grievance with the state and let the state deal with this. Because what the information he provided here was false, and we have documentation. He was present when we mentioned some of the issues we had. And also here, which, when I was in twenty nineteen with the council chair, Protem, now, we mentioned this company that was milking this city. And this attorney did nothing about it. In twenty nineteen, we brought this one company that milked the city for seven-point-nine million dollars since twenty-two thousand. And again, let me say it again, seven-point-nine million dollars. In twenty years, this company, every, you guys can follow this information. This company was supposed to be doing stuff for the city. It was not doing anything for the city. The minute this was brought up, which, by myself, when I was on council chair, Protem, and now the council chair, Protem Muscat, we brought this up. Within a few months, this company disappeared. They were based out of DPW. So don't come here, previous attorney, to come here, talk. You were privy to a lot of information. You did nothing about it. So please, if you want to address this, like I said, we'll deal with the, with, with the state bar. I will be filing grievance against this here. Okay, that's all I have to say.
I mean, if, I, I will give you thirty seconds. I will give you thirty seconds to reply.
Thank you. And I will have to reply again. Yes. I got a lot more, more information than this.
You have thirty seconds.
Let's, let's be clear on a few things.
Council Chair, one second, Council Chair.
Gladly.
It's not a debate.
No, 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 no.
He already made his comment, but if he wants to go forward.
Mr. Freina, you don't have a right to speak.
Turning it into a debate. I'm just saying, that's not the purpose.
Point of order, please.
Thank you.
I'm giving you thirty seconds. Please adjust to Council Chair.
Absolutely.
And, and, and this is it. I'm putting an end to it.
That's not a problem.
We have thirty seconds. Go ahead.
If we want to address things, and if the mayor wants to do stuff that waves privilege, I will be more than glad to speak about any number of issues, any number of issues that reflect on his poor leadership with respect to all of these things in the city. I encourage you to end up asking them to do so, Mayor. I'll be ready for it.
Yeah, well, it'd be on a grievance with the state bar. So we'll be dealing with you and the state bar. on the state bar.
Thank you, guys, point of order, we're done here. Onto the next, sorry, sir, how you doing?
Good.
Give me your name, your address, the county that you live in.
Joseph Daub, Eaton Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, traffic getting here was quite dangerous on telegraph. Yes, you do need some police patrol there during the busy times. Computers for the fire department, what's going to happen to them?
Those are police station, I'm sorry.
The police sta, yeah, the police station, whatever, the computers, can they be recycled, upcycled and maybe given, donated to like the poor or, you know, certain things that we can library or whoever needs them, like upgrades instead of spending more money?
So I know that the IT director or anyone, anytime we, you know, we send anything out, we offer to donate at first and if they're like too old or nobody's going to accept them, we just-
He said, he said four to five years old, so those are pretty new, so instead of looking at, you know, who needs the highest end computers, just give out, you know.
I agree with you, that's actually a great-
And I hope the new computers have warranties because that seems a lot of money for, depending on how many computers you're getting. Now, the creek.
Yes, I can say, you guys are doing a decent job, has not flooded in the last couple of years. Thank you for DPW for keeping out the drains. But we still, we'll still need more work on it. So, maybe look at having code, I want to, I extended my, my gutters out, about 10 feet out. I also put a sink pump in. So maybe getting us eventually, working us as a, you know, committee, looking at getting us off the sewers, like Canton did, where I, where I came from. So now all that water's going down the drain.
Yeah.
So, and then that thing about five years ago, about, where's our, we have, I don't know, I'm here from the state, but where's our government? Well, Talib, what's her name?
Rashida Talib.
Rashida Talib. Can we ever come back and say what's going on with that? Because we had five years, we had a meet, that meeting in Annapolis when it happened.
Chair.
Well, hang on, go ahead, pause this time real quick for me, real quick. Yeah, Mayor.
So, we are actually, there was a design for, trying to do something on, on our property for the, for the retention detention. So the Army Corps of Engineers already looking at something with the county, so that's Commissioner Kenezak mentioned earlier. So that was one of the things that we talked about at that meeting. So they are pursuing, obviously the first one is the ARPAT, $10 million. You know, once they get that cleaned up, they're also doing a parallel work, trying to figure out, you know, what the design will be for the retention detention off of Incester and Powers.
Right.
So once we have the information, the details, so they are working on a design and that's from the $1.5 million that Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib and Congresswoman Dingle, when they came here, presented the check.
Right.
So we are working on it and once we have momentum and information on that, we'll pass it to the residents.
Also, keep in mind, your time is still paused, Commissioner Kenezak has also allocated $10 million to help mitigate, to all of the creek, not just Dearborn Heights, but majority of Dearborn Heights.
Oh, yeah, I understand all that, it's, 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 we also have to look at, if we're going to dredge, we don't want that stuff to come back in. So unless, maybe you look at a organic way of using concrete retaining walls, I was, I used to work in, into Home Depot when I used to do landscaping.
I used to see some.
So large, like, like ponds and stuff like that, you know, you need to hold, hold the soil back, but in an organic way where we're still letting rainwater and the animals get there to, thing, so. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, God bless you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Start off with your name, your address, and the county that you reside in.
Blake Perry, I live on, I live on Penn Street, so I'm a disability advocate and I advocate for people who can't speak up for themselves. So I actually went to the mayor's office about a few months ago and I'm willing to actually advocate to bring the disability commission back, but I think that the big focus is for really help engage and understand inclusion, but also help people who live in group homes. So there's like a lot of different areas, example, a person with a disability can be locked on a house lease and that can cause issues like that. I think that there needs to be understanding that, police should understand self-determination, language, so that's why I kind of made these flyers, so I just thought I'd always give it to the audience. I'm a strong disability advocate, so this is something that I wanted to, the mayor's secretary said, if I have four people, she could, the commission can be back together, so I just wanted to thank her for that. And I have the flyers.
You're going to hand them to the clerk and the clerk will hand them out?
And then maybe a people walking, so, okay. Is all of them?
Yep.
Yeah, oh, sorry, and so this is my first time speaking, I have a sensitive sensitivity disability, but like I'm a strong advocate, like I used to do presentations to people I had to speak with, their legislators, so I used to prep people, like before they spoke with him, when the state senator, so, and I still had the presentation.
Thank you.
Are you speaking as a resident or are you speaking as indirectly? As a resident. I just would like to remind everybody, I kind of heard there's a garage sale at Canfield Community Center from nine-
Can I get your name, address, and the street you live on?
Kim Lorenzal, from Dearborn Heights, and I just would like to remind everybody that there's a citywide garage sale Saturday, nine to four, at the Canfield Community Center. So we have over 50 vendors, so please come and find your treasure.
Thank you. Before we go to the next, I know I've asked this before about the disability commission, what is going on with that? Can we get a quick update on there, corporation counsel?
Yes, we had a meeting with our attorneys, we're putting together a civic, civic association like Incester Royal Ocas, so we can start raising money for our commissions. At the same time, we're putting together for our disability commission and our, our beautification commission as well, those two, and I've met with Councilman Ahmed about this already, we had a meeting last Friday, I did, did an email out to Councilman Ahmed and Councilman Muscat on the commission that we're putting together. So we are moving forward.
Okay, can you keep me in the loop on those emails?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I will forward you need.
Thank you. All right, are you speaking as a resident or are you speaking as?
As a resident is okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We kind of missed the announcements, Nancy Brier, Colgate Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. Okay, we missed the announcements and the other gentleman that talked about the creek, we did not have a meeting last month due to really bad weather, so we will be having one this month on the 23rd, 6:00 PM. The address is 3335 South Beach Daly, and also the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association will have their meeting at 7:00 PM, same location on the 24th of Thursday. And this is a little heads up, on September, the 4th Thursday of the month, we will have all six candidates that are running for city council with a moderator, and you will be able to ask them questions at that time. And that will be earlier, 6:30, so that everybody gets a chance to do their thing.
What date is that again?
It's going to be the 4th Thursday, I didn't look at the address for you, or the time, the date.
In September?
In September. So that's September, the 4th Thursday.
It would be the 28th, I think.
The 28th of September, 6:30. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Please state your name, address, the city they reside in.
Tony Camilleri, Midway, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Good evening. The last meeting I couldn't attend, and this evening, it's unfortunate, Mr. Muscat, Councilman Muscat isn't here, so I'm going to kind of-
Guys, point of order, I will-
Hold back a bit, so this doesn't look like an ambush, being he isn't here. There was a comment made two meetings ago, on July 7th, about him being sick of the lies, of the safety concerns that I brought up at the banquet center at the Warren Valley Golf Course. Okay, I'm going to hold back, but they are not lies, there is documented proof, and out of respect for everybody, I will bring this all up at the next meeting. Again, I don't want this to look like an ambush, but the investigation is proceeding, there were, was additional information requested from me and the other party, so that's what's being looked into and it's taking it a step further. But there are many, many additional safety, construction safety hazard concerns at the facility outside of what I brought up about the ceiling alone, there are seven others. Okay, I'm putting a packet together to give to each and every one of you. It's taken a while, my phone was being fixed for five days, I just got it back last Monday, this past Monday, so it's taken some time. But my opinion, there needs to be an investigation outside of OSHA, and there should be some sort of stop work order until this can be looked into. This is a public safety issue, this is not about me, this is not about a restaurant or a cigar lounge or even a hookah lounge. There's many, many other issues, I'm not going to back away from it, but right now, that's all I'm going to say, because I don't want this again to look like it's an ambush because Mr. Muscat's not here. I will bring it up at the next meeting.
Thank you so much, sir.
Good night.
Good night.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. I do recall the last meeting, council, or chair council, council chair asked Mr. Deeb for a follow-up as far as going, and he left. So with that being said, school starts back in a couple of weeks, that means fall here, football season. Let's all remember what Joey was doing when he was killed crossing the street, he was leaving a high school football game. Signs, how long is it going to take to put up the signs in the ground? Well, will it, will it be done before it gets too cold and we continue to wait and put children's lives at risk? In the meantime, can we add the reflective tape to the stop signs? I have a friend of mine, we are looking into doing, if we could, if we are able to get a donation, can we put up blinking lights, solars, to help with this? If so, how long could we get to take them? So, I want to thank again, thank Robert for, the deputy deputy director for helping and getting those crosswalks done, but I'm just a little disappointed, I was hoping to hear a follow-up with it and I don't get the follow-up now. So, keep in mind, you know, it's going to be fall, I don't want to hear that it's going to take, that it's too cold to get these done. We need to save our children's lives, these are the future. Thank you, and congratulations to everybody.
Thank you so much, Mrs. King. The last time you called me, I was getting yelled at.
That's the nature of the beast.
Thank you, please.
Roast trepey, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. I appreciate you guys following through with getting our coordinator hired, but we want some action, not just mouthpiece, and as he said with the bathrooms, it's seven years I've been in that office, that, that bathroom was supposed to be fixed and it's still got the toilet of child. And I think it's, you don't want to hear bullshit, but that's what it is. Somebody needs to do something and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you so much about that. Also, I'm, I'm just going to ask, Mayor, please, if we can go up for specs on those bathrooms? Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Hassan Bazzy, I live on Sheehan Drive in Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Ahmad, he brought a very important subject tonight, Mr. Commissioner Kenezak, how are you? We're talking about the street sweepers. I got a video here, two things, the priority management, I mean, it's not fair for these guys when they drive during the day of the trash pickup. I'm saying what I'm saying, I hope that will be taken seriously here, I mean, it's going to take some action to really resolve some of these problems. I know we come, we talk every week, I don't know how it lands, I mean, let me bring two subjects here. These guys, when they come drive these trucks, even it's warm weather or, or cold weather, I mean, we have to feel with them as residents. So, like this guy, I'll have Mr. Kenezak testify to that, you know, like four cars, this guy has to, to stop, to stop and get out of his car to, to bring the trash outside. I mean, four cars, four cars. So the guy came out of his car, he brought the trash can, then he put it back. You know what, I called the non-emergency police department, I have to wait, by the time I get to somebody, I explained to them, I said, there's four, five cars in the street, I gave them the address, maybe this is a time to come and ticket these people, you know, and start to teach those, some of the residents, they don't care, they don't obey the law, some lessons. I was working out of the house, I have the camera outside, I mean, no show, unfortunately. And the other thing is, I don't want to lose track here, the street sweeper, yesterday, I mean, I went outside, I was yelling at some neighbors, six or seven cars in the damn street, I mean, nobody cares, I called the, the ordinance department, I spoke to someone there, well, I'm sorry, it's not on us, it's on the police department. I mean, I don't know, should we call the Wayne County Sheriff, should we call the State Department? I mean, I mean, we need action, this is unacceptable here. We're happy the street sweepers are coming to the neighborhood, to the neighbors, to clean the streets, but they go like a zigzag, and I stopped the guy, I said, I do apologize as a citizen, you know, these things has to be taken seriously. What is the fine for the car park during the street? I mean, do you know how, what the fine is? Anybody knows what the fine is?
It was $50 at one time.
I mean, we need to start issue these tickets here and, I don't know, nobody's taking us serious here, nobody cares.
Thank you, guys.
Talking to myself at the end of it.
Well, if you'd like, you can give your name and number to Georgia Ann and we can have somebody from the administration follow up with you.
Like, I feel like I'm talking to myself tonight. That's a-
Hassan, I was listening, okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll do something, I'll let you know, I'll take some action on that, because it is ridiculous, you know, the, the street, the cars in the street, one car in the street messes up three or four houses from getting their, from, from getting their clean. And the street sweepers, they don't like to weave in and out of them cars, they like to go right down the curb, you know? Thank you. Counselor? Yeah, correct, Councilman.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Bazzy, we do care, and that's why I mentioned it, and I, and I beg the resident to do their part too. I mean, probably we can instruct the police department to go ahead and start giving tickets, but, I mean, probably at one point, we're going to have to, but, I mean, but-
Why have the law, you don't do it.
At one point, but, I mean, it starts with us, I mean, if we're not going to do our part, I mean, this is our home. I mean, probably it's, it's going to end up that way, I see it, but I mean-
Hey, guys, please, please, guys, nothing from the audience, please.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
But I, I, I mean, believe me, I'll make sure, I will talk to the administration, we're going to push it through the chief, and we're going to have an end to this. Thank you very much.
Uh, please state your name, address.
Hassan Saab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to, for the Tuesday's election, I want to thank the clerk, honestly, you guys did a heck of a job throughout the process, made it easier, and I want to congratulate everybody that ran, Moe yourself and everybody else, including myself. Everybody was a clean campaign and, you know, on, on the day of election, everybody worked together, all the campaigns were helping each other, giving drinks, food to everybody, it was a good time actually, and I thank all the residents that came on and actually voted. Two issues, one, Margaret was up here speaking about illuminated lights at the schools, for school zone, with solar lights on them. Problem is, if we got them donated, what is the process through the city to get them actually installed? I know it's got to go through engineering and everything, because you just can't go and install them, because it's a traffic device, whether it's something that would take a month, take a year, anybody know?
Please, please finish your point, we'll address it.
And then, my second issue is about the garbage thing and also, it's already an ordinance that on garbage day, you cannot be parked in the street, so it should be, you should be ticketed regardless, we shouldn't start, should be processed, it should be a process already in, you know, I don't know if it's ordinance or police that are doing it, but everybody should be ticketed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, do you mind if I answer?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I mean, just going back to the stop signs, I know for bringing the, thank you for bringing the up, but I think, nobody's supposed to touch the stop signs, it's a city property and only the city can touch the stop sign. In case, can we install something, this has to go through the- This has to go through the traffic division, to see if it's, through the police department and traffic bureau, to make sure it's actually legal to do, so we'll make sure, we'll push it forward, we'll keep you informed. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Go ahead, sure, please, state your name.
Zohair Abdulha, Rosemary, I have to say.
Go ahead.
Two issues I want to talk about. Thank you, Councilman Wensel, for bringing the issue of the dispatch. When I was on the council, we pushed for it, we approved it, and we kept it in the city of Dearborn Heights. And it's been two and a half years, and nobody knows what happened, if we have full staff or if we don't, and if we bought the equipment or not. But somebody has basically to follow up to make sure that it is up to date, and the money which was allocated is spent properly, and we have the right equipment and the right staff, because that is the first place anybody calls during emergency for help. The second thing I'm going to say to the mayor, and in a friendly way, I don't want to raise my voice or anything, let's follow the charter in everything we do. We will be in good shape, we don't have lawsuits, we don't have to go to closed sessions and pay thousands or hundreds of thousands in settlement, which the residents don't know about. So let's follow the charter in hiring and firing and everything we do, and that's how it should be run, and that's how we can be safe, and we save money for the city and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abdulha. Any more in person? Please go ahead, name, street, and city, please.
Joanne Cuziana, Mine Plainfield, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. I know it's becoming a mutual admiration society here, but I worked in what we lovingly called the pit crew in the back room. And I just wanted to make a comment on the fact that with the election on Tuesday, it's amazing the job that you can do when you have a clear goal, and you have cooperation, and you have teamwork, and you have a good leader, which we have in the clerk's office. It was great working on, you know, the whole election, and Lynn should get another hand for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody in person? Can we move on to Zoom, please? I think we have only one. Ash. Ash, please go ahead. Can you hear us? We just lost her, I think. She's not, I don't see her anymore, is she?
Yeah, she's still on.
Ash, Ash. Ash, can you hear us?
She did say that her internet was in and out.
She did, she did come in a couple times.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor.
Thank you. Great job, Councilman.
We're moving on.
Do you want me to ask her to unmute again?
Yes.
I don't see her anymore.
She's on my participant. Yes, she is, the second one from the.
All right, anyone else? Ash, are you still on there? Can you hear us?
This is the next picture.
She's unmuted.
Okay, Councilor.
Councilman.
Before I motion to adjourn.
One more, one more thing, Councilman, before you do such. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else in the audience?
Just want to mention, before I, I know we just wished Commissioner Kenezic, you know, early happy birthday, but before I get in trouble, my wife's birthday is tomorrow, so I want to wish her a happy birthday on public TV.
Also, happy birthday to you, Councilman, I know yours is coming up.
It's next week.
Should we say happy birthday since we're here, Commissioner? I think we're going to do it for David and Councilman, I'm out on the wife. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Guys, really? That's four. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, Councilman, and the wives. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Are you one? Are you two?
Councilor.
Councilor, I motion to adjourn, the Dearborn Heights City Council regular meeting at 8:55.
Second from.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Ash came in.
Ash came in? Okay, I'm sorry before.
Ash is back.
Ash.
Hi, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
That's very loud.
She came back in.
My name's Ash Offman, I'm Rochelle Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I just want to send my condolences to the mayor and his family on the passing of his father last week, and I'd like to take my time and ask for a moment of silence.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and do that. The mayor is actually not here, but we're going to still do that.
We already did that.
Yeah, we're going to do it again. Honor his father. Thank you guys so much.
Councilor, again, I motion to adjourn, the Dearborn Heights City Council regular